Good evening. We're going to call the Laporte County Council Regular Meeting for March 28th.
Recording in progress.
2022 to order.
This meeting is being recorded.
We get that. Everybody, please stand for the pledge. Silence your phones and your computers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Auditor.
Councilman Yagelski.
Present.
Councilman Garner.
Present.
Councilman Cunningham.
Present.
Councilman Rosenbaum.
Present.
Councilman Novak.
Present.
Councilman Mullenauer on Zoom, perhaps?
Present.
Thank you. Councilwoman Graham Rosa.
Present.
All seven present.
Thank you. Approval of the March 28th, 2022 agenda.
Mr. President, I have a few items to add to the agenda. Under new business, number one, need to add a letter B, Human Resources Director, recommendation that Assistant Director Monique Thomas be assigned as Acting Director until replacement is found. C, MS4 Director. Then add number four, clerk permission to purchase two new computers for early voting, recommended by IT because the old ones are running on Windows 7. Number five, approve the declaration of emergency repair for the purpose of emergency repair of the grandstand seating at the Laporte County Fairgrounds. We will also be requesting that this be advertised for our special meeting in April for funding. Presentation to follow. Under old business, we're adding number four, set date for public hearing regarding resolution approving the acquisition of real property pursuant to section IC 36-1-10.51, parcel next to EMS base in Michigan City. It's the west side of the building on Cool Spring. Request this is to be set for our special meeting on April 11th or 13th. And then number five, an update plan for the Westville Emergency Siren.
Sure any other questions or additions to the agenda?
So that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Graham Rosa, motion by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions or comments? There are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the January 24th, 2022 meeting minutes. You want to do these separate or together?
I'd ask for separate because we have a couple corrections.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. President.
January 24th minutes.
Yeah, if I may, the papers that were passed out today are identical to the email minutes that you got a week ago with one exception. I noticed under item page two where you approved the minutes, you approved the January 3rd, 2022 minutes. Page two of what I passed out, the very top line, it simply did not indicate that those minutes were approved and so that's been added. Said motion to correct January 3rd, 2022 meeting minutes is what it had said and what I'm suggesting and changing is to motion to approve January 3rd, 2022 minutes correcting the items that were listed. So the only change is to indicate that you didn't just correct them, you also approved them. That's all.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Ms. Graham Rosa. Is there any other questions on the January 24th minutes? There are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next one is the February 28th, 2022 meeting minutes.
If you'd indulge me on this one also, Mr. President?
Absolutely.
I spoke with Councilman Yagelski and there was an item regarding, you didn't pass these minutes out because these will be put out to you later, it's an addition of a few sentences as requested by Councilman Yagelski. This is under the first appropriations transfers and request item. So this is the only change to the minutes that went out to you over email on Friday night is the addition of this phrase under the Meadowview, Laporte County Engineer Meadowview appropriations transfers and requests, that'd be page nine. Mr. Yagelski emphasized that the county will not be directly hooking up anyone from the subdivision into the system. Surveyor Hendricks affirmed that that is correct.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
I'd like to make a motion with those changes to approve.
So a motion as amended.
All second.
Motion by Mr. Yagelski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum as amended. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Public comment, public comment is now open. Anybody from the public that would like to speak? You do not need to raise your hand. But I do appreciate that. That's. Sure.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jackie Dermody and I'm here tonight on behalf of Family Advocates. To begin, thank you for your support of Family Advocates over the years. I'm greatly appreciative of that. I'm not sure if everyone is aware, but April is Child Abuse Prevention Month and Family Advocates is working with Dune Brook to provide some opportunities for the community to raise awareness. As well, Family Advocates has taken on the theme of Paint the Town Blue. So beginning Friday, April 1st, you're going to see blue wreaths in the downtown, on the courthouse lawn and in Michigan City as well. So I'm just here to say thank you.
Thank you.
I also have blue ribbons for everyone that I made. I'm going to pass them out to you guys.
Sure. Mr. President, I'd just like to congratulate the new director.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Did you get permission from the mayor of Laporte to use blue instead of orange? I just want to double check.
No.
So. Let the record show, she said she doesn't need permission from the mayor of Laporte. Thank you. Keep up the good work, Jackie. Any other person from the public that would like to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Lisa Pierce Akowski, Senator Township Trustee. I'm just here for my monthly update on the Laporte County eviction rental assistance for 20 of the 21 townships that I'm representing. Since March 1st, we only had three that we did. I do have two that we're working on right now. So the balance right now is $13,667.07.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Lisa?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else from the public?
Hi, good evening. Rip Ledlow, 1103 West 19th, retired paramedic with the Laporte County EMS after 35 years. Been retired for eight. I come to you this evening just for the same reason I went to the county commissioners back about a month ago and that was to say thank you. And the thank you is with the idea of putting an ambulance out in the Rolling Prairie area. It's been a 40-year, 40-year hope and prayer to get better ambulance care out in that area. There's two directors that are sitting back here behind me that attempted to get that done and never did. Then they've set on commissions and they've set on councils and we never got it done. They're great people, they've tried hard, but we are this close in getting this done. Tonight, it's the appropriation for dollars towards that ambulance base. I have to thank St. Rep. Pressel for coming forward with that idea and kind of stimulated from a certain person right here that it might be a good idea to see if the state would relinquish that property to Laporte County, along with Attorney Shaw Friedman, I'm sure. Had to write a lot of letters and a lot of issues to try to get that property to Laporte County. I've always thought that we needed one. We've started that idea, just like Terry Garner, just like when we put an ambulance down in Wanatack back in the 19, late 70s, we put an ambulance down there. We have tried and tried and tried to provide better care for the people of the northeast Laporte County. I just had a person at church tell me yesterday, thank you for being an advocate for an ambulance base in Rolling Prairie, because they wouldn't call an ambulance because they just know how long it takes to get from Laporte to 1,000 North and Fail Road. Randy, you've lived it, you know it. Sheriff Mullenauer on Zoom knows it. I've heard the word that the base is extravagant. I don't know how extravagant a two-bay garage with maybe four bedrooms, a living room, kitchen, dining room, bathroom can be. You know, maybe in today's world, if we would have built it 10 years ago or 20 years ago at $8 for a two-by-four, yeah, maybe it is higher than what we need. But darn it, the people of northeast Laporte County deserve better. Now, I read in the paper the other day that the idea gets floated around that we need to move an ambulance crew from Laporte out to Rolling Prairie. We're just defeating our purpose. We need to keep a separate crew out in Rolling Prairie and leave three units in Laporte. I talked to Supervisor Jeff Rose the other day. They ran 41 calls on a Thursday. And that's in springtime. Randy, you know how call load goes up. We need to get this ball rolling. We need the four people, we need seven people to say, hey, this is time that we get this ball rolling. You know, we've kind of, you know, I understand, there's a bucket and my slice of the bucket was always EMS for 35 years. And I understand you have the whole bucket that you have to worry about and I get it. As an employee, I get it. As a former employee, I get it. But it's time that we get that taken care of and I hope we get four votes. I hope we get seven votes tonight to do that. Now, there's certainly other people in this room that we need to pass this additional tax. And there's people in this room, and I was just talking to Mayor Dermity, that thinks we need to reinvent the wheel and put ambulances in the city of Laporte. Every one of you know, and they know too, it's not a moneymaker. It was never, it was never brought to the idea by Dr. Barbara Backer and keep naming names, that it can be a moneymaker. You know, every year, you just appropriated about a half million dollars for two ambulances. That's just the ambulances, that's not equipment. You know, we've, we've heard the figure of a million and a half dollars to support the bridge in Michigan City. In 40 years, that's $60 million if that's true. It's time that we provide better health care to the people of northeast Laporte County with the addition of new employees, not taking crews from here out there. I thank you.
Thank you.
I thank everybody that's been in EMS over all the years that have, that has jumped on a call and headed to the Toll Road or headed to 1,000 North and Fail Road or 220. We're going to save lives, we're going to do better by getting an ambulance.
Thank you.
In that area. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And congratulations on coming out of retirement.
Couldn't do it.
That, oh, I see, I see.
No, that paramedic elapsed. I did that on purpose.
They give you new, they issue new ones every day.
Yeah, they do.
Thank you for your service, Mr. Ledlow. Anybody else from the public?
Hello? Andy Minnick. I think you guys probably know my name by now and I think most of you have read my letter, right? Is that a yes?
Yes.
Anyway, I farmed south down there where the discharge is for this, where you're going to drain Noack subdivision. And so some of my concerns and fellow neighbors here, as many of you know, I have concerns about the plan to drain water from the Noack subdivision referred, also referred to as Meadowview in Kingsbury Creek. Sincere thank you to all of you that talk to me and I think I've talked to everybody so I really appreciate it. My wife and I love this county. Our families have lived, worked and farmed in this community for several generations. I'm passionate about the issue and I think generationally, I think about my children, but I'm thinking about their children and the decisions like this can vastly alter our water quality and our agricultural community. I would also like to reiterate, I feel for the residents in Noack subdivision and their water situation. The developer who built this subdivision and the officials who approved the permits did not properly plan for these drainage issues. I think this is the greatest country in the world because bipartisanship can lead to great debates and improved solutions. But until now, the county council had only really heard one side of the story. Tonight, several people here are here to share the other side of the story on the other end of the drainage fight. My wife and I purchased land along Kingsbury Creek in 2017. We paid top dollar for, when market was at its highest. We rely on every source of income to make payment and pay the taxes on our farm and we both work full-time jobs. When we bought the farm, we wanted to clear old tree rows that had, but had to have a determination done through NRCS, Natural Resources Conservation Service here in Laporte. And keep in mind, we footed the bill for everything, the clearing of everything. NRCS declared the land along the creek a wetland and a flood zone. During high rain events, I monitored the water to see the water go over the banks and flood my low fields. I am not allowed to do any drainage or remove any trees or blockage from the creek by rules of the DNR and IDEM. Kingsbury Creek is not a drainage ditch. Because it is not a drainage ditch, it is not under the jurisdiction of the Drainage Board. I am attempting to, I'm sorry, attempting to use the drainage ditch and work around the authority of the Drainage Board seems like an unethical loophole to me. If the Drainage Board determines that a ditch needs to be cleared, the property owners adjacent to the ditch and responsible for paying, they are charging additional fee on their property taxes, and I wish to say adjacent to it, but I also, in a watershed, so it could be a bigger area, they're charging additional fee. If my septic needs to be fixed, I'm financially responsible. It is not customary for the county to pick up a bill for drainage issues on privately-owned real estate. From the county council's minutes, the county council is going to spend about $1 million. That's what I wrote. I've heard a lot of different things since we've looked that up. I have no idea how much this is actually going to cost total with all the roadwork and everything. I've heard anywhere from $91,000 to like 100 or 1.6 million. I don't know what that number is, maybe somebody has that exact number. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Sheri Banek. I live at 4551 South 75 West in Laporte. I'm the first home site south of the creek. Oh, okay, sorry about that. We are, we live at the first home site south of the creek, which is a concern. Obviously, Andy stated that it isn't a flood zone, it's actually designated as a wetland as well. On occasion, usually once a year, the creek does crest over the banks and floods into my yard. Although I'm not in a designated flood zone A, my, the north side of my property does flood. So with this drain that you're installing to help alleviate the water from Noack subdivision, unfortunately, the people downstream, someone else you guys need to really consider. I understand the funding has already been approved, but the IDEM permit, from what I got a copy of, it's still in the making of being approved. After reviewing the IDEM application today, there's numerous errors on this IDEM application. So I hope this isn't an indication of how the whole project has been. And I think it really needs to be really, really looked at again. The project location that is on the permit is inaccurate. It's actually designating a bridge in Union Mills. The location of the latitude and longitude is accurate for the actual Kingsbury Creek, but everything else is inaccurate. Also, on the application, definitely states that the existing condition for the project site is not in a wetland, which is inaccurate. You can go on Beacon and tell that it's inaccurate. Another item that I found really interesting was I was, you know, going through the internet and finding out a little bit more about this project, because we're a little bit late. We understand that the funding has already been approved and it's been several years in the making. An article wrote for the Northwestern Indiana Times dated February 8th, I believe Haney was quoted, that this project will also alleviate flooding from other developments, farmland and roads. I think transparency is really important with this drain. This is a 36-inch drain coming into a natural spring water, which could have a huge impact on our environmental state of that creek. I've lived in the Kingsbury area my entire life, we played in that creek. It is, it's a natural spring, it's a clean water system. We're going to be dumping stormwater into the system. On the IDEM permit, for some reason, none of that information regarding flooding from other developments, farmlands or roads is not on that. The only thing it says is to install subsurface tile French drain to lower the water table for the Meadowview subdivision. From talking to other people, I find out that there's farmland that's going to be drained into the creek as well. We also have farmland that borders Kingsbury Creek that is in a flood zone. Unfortunately, he's probably, another farmer, a couple farmers, obviously Andy, he has a lot of farmland, as well as Harold Barr. He owns farmland that borders it. He's going to be flooded out. Have we thought about the people south of the creek? Kingsbury has several houses that border the creek that are within 25, 50 feet of the creek bed. Those people are probably going to be flooded by dumping all this water into the creek. I think we just need to take a step back, maybe, obviously look at the permit again and reorganize the permit and actually be truthful and transparent on the permit so we know really what's going on when it comes to this project. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
I'm Harold Barr and I own farmland that borders the wetland and the Kingsbury Creek. And I've been, I've lived there my whole life, so I've seen the good, the bad and the ugly of that area. And the thing that I'm really concerned about is any, and I can almost tell you certainly, any extra water that comes down there, this discharge into the creek will end up in my field and I'll lose stowable acres over that. So it's, it's a real concern to me and I feel kind of, I wish we had, maybe, maybe there was, but I certainly didn't get notified by anybody earlier on about it or else I would have spoken up sooner. But that's, that's about my main concern is, is I know that it will discharge right there by my house and it'll end up in the field. So, because it's very low there.
Thank you.
So anyway, thanks a lot.
My name's Dennis Lance. I own property on the Kingsbury Creek as well. Goes right through the middle of my property. If you want to take a peek at this, I have one of the prettiest pieces of property in Laporte County as far as I'm concerned. You can see the creek winds back and forth all through the property and how pretty it is. So I'm really happy with it. But I also know that there's flooding there. I want to show you a picture of my wife, my grandchildren and my daughter sitting on the bridge that we have that goes across it. So you can see what that's like with them there. Now, I want to show you what it looks like when that floods. That gets as far as 100 feet across. It flows as, I've had it as far when we had the 100-year rain, that it probably went 300 feet out of the ditch banks. It overflows my stream that the banks are on that and as Andy was talking about earlier, we can't do anything about it because it's a flood plain. But why, and we're going to pass some of these pictures around. My wife's not real excited about being up here with me, so we'll let you look at some of those pictures. But when I, when we filled out the application, had my pond put in, we had a professional engineering company put it in, we went through the Army Corps of Engineers and submitted the permits to put in the pond. I did that back in, oh, 1990 is when we got the permits. Now, some of this has probably changed since then. But in 1990, after we got the permits back from the Army Corps of Engineers, it came back very quickly stating that that is not controlled by the Army Corps of Engineers, that it's controlled by the State of Indiana. And then what I was told at that time, there were only three wetlands in the entire state of Indiana that were controlled by the, by the Indiana DNR. And that's one of those three. So it took another two years of getting, before we got the permits back, before I could put the pond in. And this is just talking about a pond that was actually making more lake water instead of taking it from a wetland. But if you look at Door Village, all the way down to the Kankakee River when that goes in there, that is a wetland. It's not a flood, it is a flood plain and it's a wetland, totally different than a ditch, not even close to being what a ditch is. But nobody contacted anybody downstream. I'm going to go on to the next one and I have a problem with this permit. I also owned Rackham Oil Company for a number of years. When we got ready to have a environmental cleanup on the property, it took me nine years with my permits with the Indiana IDEM and $800,000 to clean up my property and we had to have every permit looked at hundreds and hundreds of times, professional engineering companies to go through that so that we could get all that cleaned up. And all I'm being told is that we called somebody down at IDEM and they said it was all right to go ahead and put that drainage through there, which I don't believe is accurate. Farmer to the south of me was, had a pump in there that he was pumping out of the ditch to do his irrigation and was told by IDEM, by IDEM, that he couldn't pump out of that ditch because that was controlled by the, by the DNR and so he had to put in a well and he couldn't pump out of that ditch anymore. Another thing is, is that when I was on the city council in Laporte, we had trouble with all the lakes flooding. We were lucky enough to find a situation where we could put a suction line in Clear Lake that would be, that would run, that was a, it would actually have a suction thing on it, like you would do when you're suctioning the gas out of your gas tank and then it would, it would run after that. And it was all set up in Clear Lake, that three-inch line was going to drain Pine Lake, Stone Lake, Clear Lake, Lily Lakes, all of the lakes in Laporte. So we started it up and the thing worked, it worked perfectly. And then we got a lawsuit from Kankakee, Illinois that shut down that thing saying that we could not run water out of the Laporte lakes to flood Kankakee, Illinois. So we're not upset with the neighbors down the road and we're sympathetic to what their problems are with the flooding, but nobody was sympathetic to us. Nobody gives a care about what's happening with us being flooded down there. I got pictures of me having the tow trucks come out, pulling me out of the ditch bank when I tried to mow it to make mine look nice and you can't do it because it's too soft when it stays full all the time. And that ditch bank will stay full all the time with that additional thing. So I guess that we would have said something earlier, none of us knew about it ahead of time. We're being told that there's nothing that we can do, can be done, but if the permits are not filled out properly, and that's what I believe has happened with the, with the state permit and, got to get the right name. Banek, Mrs. Banek was telling us about it, but on the permit, it says, is this a wetland? And it says that it is, that it says, is it a lake? And it says no. And it says it is stream and it says yes, and it says it's Kingsbury Creek. And it says, is it a wetland? And it's marked no. That is not true. That is a wetland. Then you go to the next page on the application and it says, is there a copy of the Wetland Declarations Report? And it is, and it's not marked. They didn't think they had to do that. It says, are there copies of the corrective actions for the USACE Wetlands Project? Nothing was checked there, so nothing was done on that. Was there copies of the correspondence with the Indiana Department of Natural Resources? No. And when we were, that was not marked. And we've been told, well, we talked to somebody at IDEM and we talked to somebody at the DNR. That is not how they work. Their permits are really thick and complicated, because I went through them. So I don't, I don't, things may have changed since I was in politics and since I was doing this type of stuff, but I don't think it's changed that drastically that they got all this stuff through and we're 100% honest on how the permits were filled out. So that's our, that's our spiel, I'm wrapping it up. But we hope you look at it because it's not fair to dump.
How many gallons of water was it, Sheri, a day they're pumping right now?
1.3 million gallons.
1.3 million gallons a day is going to be the minimum that's going to come down there and go through that ditch bank.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would recommend that you go to the next commissioners meeting on April 6th. It'll be a morning meeting, 10 o'clock in the morning. Their first meeting's in the morning, 10 o'clock in the morning. The commissioners do the contracts, the commissioners handle all this part. We just handle the financing part. And we, we understand exactly what, and as, as you heard the change in the minutes, we had questions about what was stipulated and what was actually in the contract, so we're going to ask questions also. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member from the public that would like to speak?
Spencer England, La Porte here. My comment is regarding the lit tax you're going to be considering. With me saying what I'm about to say, I think most people that know me know I have nothing but respect for first responders, police, fire, because I served 18 years in the Army, did over two years overseas service with the US Army, and I just really would consider some of you that have children to think to yourself, if some, if your kid walks up to you and asks you for 20 bucks, first question you're going to ask him is, what do you need it for? So when we consider this lit tax, I don't think that it's been well, let's say, hasn't been put on paper, so to speak, where all this money's going to go. There is a certain amount of money that's needed to take care of a certain aspect of the lit tax. The rest of it, it's just going to be sitting out there. So I think sitting down, putting on paper, showing, being transparent, and discussing specifically where the rest of the money's going to go. Because as much as I respect the first responders, and God knows, officers in my area and my neighborhood, I help them out with the area where we're at. I mean, we got guys that watch here, but the simple fact is, we're here to serve the people in La Porte, of La Porte, and we need to be transparent, showing specifically where all the money's going. You know, asking for half a percent, why not give 2%? Why not give 6%? There should be specifics on where it's going to go, because my big concern is, I have no issue with progression, because God knows, in certain places, we need it, but there are places more money can be found and, and be saved with what we're doing currently. But if we're going to expand, we have to think five or 10 years from now, if we're going to expand parts of the county, how are we going to maintain that? We have to consider those costs. So with the money that's going to be raised, let's talk specifically about where the money's going. Give that to the public, so they can consider it before you place a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Good evening, Council. Paul Prisbalinski, Councilman, Second Ward, Michigan City. We're going on, I believe, 19 years in public service. I am also a resident of the Second Ward for my entire life. I, I come here this evening to talk about the lit tax and what I see as problems with the approach of that tax. Now, I can only speak for the city of Michigan City, and so, for, we gave, we negotiated a contract with the Police Department in Michigan City, and the Fire Department in Michigan City, which I believe is a very, very good contract. And we have money in Michigan City to fund that contract for the next three years. We did projections. So I'm trying to, as an elected official, I'm trying to figure out where and how this narrative is being driven. And the reason I say that is because we also, in Michigan City, the labor negotiating team, which I'm a part of, and the finance committee, which I'm a part of, instituted a first, I believe we're one of the first entities in the state to offer our police and firemen a 25-year longevity package, which in doing that increases their payout on their pension, and their weekly pay also, if they go over 20 year, the 20-year mark. So what I'm trying to, what I'm, I don't see this urgency in Michigan City. I don't know what's going on in La Port. I don't know, and I think that I'm, I'm trying to get to that point and dig in, dig into this issue, but do, do you really think that this is the time and the place? Because as I look at other taxes that we have on the books, the local option tax, I don't know what you guys are using that for, but I do know that it could be used for some of these different salaries. But my problem is taxing people, and, and I know the hype that we're saying that we're only, we're at the low end of the table. Is that bad? Maybe that's, people are showing that they're efficient on using their money, because I don't believe that when you're talking about increasing that amount of tax a half a percent for people who are paying 9.35, that is a significant jump. And I have not seen any, which the gentleman said earlier, I have not seen even a plan laid out. But one narrative that I do take exception to is that comments being made that we have a problem in Michigan City. Well, we have to see how this is going to work. But the real problem is this. So everyone in the public knows this. As I sat in negotiations at an open meeting, not an executive session, that the police negotiating team made comments about individuals getting hired in the Police Department that were already letting it be known that they were going to leave after two years. Now, to me, that's a joke. But the real issue is this. We had closed-door meetings talking about that specific problem. And I will tell you that the administration in Michigan City has not addressed that issue, and that's where that issue needs to be addressed. It's called a hiring policy. And we would not have that problem. So hopefully, this narrative is totally, yes, we are understaffed in Michigan City, but let me also say this. The money was in the budget to be staffed at 80, I believe, 84 officers. So that is the merit board's responsibility to hire and the administrative staff at the Police Department to go out and recruit. So I believe that we, in Michigan City, we've addressed the issue, and we do not need to tax the people in Michigan City who are going to be paying over half of the revenue into that tax. I also have exception to the fact that the income level and the poverty level in Michigan City, people trying to make it, I believe it's, it's really objectionable. And the more people that I talk to and just explain simply the numbers are object to it at every income level. So I just wanted to convey that to you, and also that I missed our last council meeting because I had a family emergency, excuse me. Not trying to shrug, shrug my responsibility as an elected official, but I do agree that people need to be paid fairly, and that it's a competitive market. And I think that there are things that can be done internally without passing a tax on people. Thank you.
Mr. Prisbalinski, if you could answer two questions. I think for clarification's sake, I thought I heard you say 9.35.
I'm sorry, I keep, I keep referring to that. I shouldn't say 00935.
Point 09.
Yeah, .0935.
It could go to .0945 if it's raised. It's .095 now, and it would go to .145, right? Or 1.45, 1.45.
Right, I, I.
9.35, I was way over, I knew you didn't mean to say that. And then the other one, you started by saying, I can only speak for the city of Michigan City. You're not speaking for the city of Michigan City tonight. You're speaking as Paul Prisbalinski, correct?
No, I introduce myself as Paul Prisbalinski, a member of the city council.
Okay, but.
I'm speaking for the people who elected me, Mr. Cunningham.
Okay, my question to you is, did the Michigan City Council vote on the lit?
Yes, they did.
And what was that vote?
And their vote was five, six to two, or no.
And you were absent?
I was, yes. I was absent dealing with a family emergency.
I appreciate that, and my sympathy is, I understand.
There's no sympathy. The individual is well and fine. And I appreciate that. But, you know, Mr. Cunningham, Councilman Cunningham, is this. There are avenues to direct other monies to accomplish a goal.
I don't want to bait this issue with you, I just, and asking if.
He was just asking for clarification.
They've already taken an action. I don't know that it's fair to the public for you to say you're speaking on behalf of Michigan City when they voted two to one in favor of the lit.
Yes, Mr. Cunningham, or Councilman Cunningham, I respectfully disagree with your opinion because I am an elected official, and I am representing the people of my ward, the working people in my ward.
I think that's a better, better way to say it. I agree.
Okay.
I have no, you're, you're representing the people in your ward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cunningham. I think you're into a technicality.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record, the Michigan City, Michigan City would pay about 30% of the total cost of any public safety.
Mayor Tom Dermody of the city of La Porte, and we've heard some comments here about the lit. And I'd like to address Mr. Prisbalinski, who we have had some back and forth, and I will tell you, the working people of this county have also said they expect 911. They expect the police, and they expect fire. And when we talk about a budget, the city of La Porte, for the first time in many years, passed a general fund truly balanced budget without the boat money. We don't receive the boat money, and we still pass a general fund budget. When you look at the amount of officers, and I don't understand why we always have to be the lowest, why we always have to just get by in our community, our residents, whether in Michigan City, because I've heard from the working people of Michigan City as well, of La Porte, and of our surrounding counties do not deserve the best. And one thing I've heard consistently is, when I have an issue, I expect our police, our fires, our EMS to be there when we call. And if we haven't looked at the newspaper lately, we had two shootings in the last week. Michigan City, guns are an issue, the headlines of papers across the board. And nobody wants to raise taxes, but let's make sure we're talking about, number one, an investment in our communities to keep it, keep it safe. And number two, I was in the legislature. We passed a $32 million reduction in property tax caps to all the homeowners. The city of La Porte loses 25% of our budget to property tax caps. What we're saying is, in a different form, we're asking for a third of that back to keep people safe, to provide the necessary equipment, the necessary people. Because when we have in the city of La Porte, or in Michigan City, I will use Michigan City, when the police chief says we're down 10 officers, how long till something happens that we all regret? And every penny, every dollar is important to the taxpayers, and we are a low-tax state and a low-tax county. But I would just ask, let's make sure we're focused on what's best for our community, read the newspaper every day, and see, it's a new day what our police, our fire, and our EMS are facing. I saw the headlines myself from your EMS director. We can't keep up. 900 calls more this year than last year. We love that rolling prairie is coming. We don't want to wait 40 more years for something else to happen. And I think that's the most important part of the lit. This is the tool that the legislature has given us, and we'll be glad, Spencer England, thank you for your service, we'll be glad to show everything. We have talked about it. We've put it out there everywhere we want, and as specific, I have my cell phone, I have my office, we have public meetings. We'd love to hear if you don't like where we're headed. But number one, we are not going to be reactive anymore. We are going to be proactive. When we have alone over 150 high-risk warrant individuals in the city of La Porte that we know are around and we can't deal with because we lack people, we lack the dollars necessary that we send them out in bicycle helmets to defend themselves. As I said two months ago, we had a murderer from Atlanta hiding out in the city of La Porte, and we were going to send officers in potential bike helmets because we did not have the funding necessary to keep them safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Anybody else from the public? Anybody else from the public? Public comment is now closed. Moving on to department head reports. Any department heads?
Good evening, Barr.
Houston, 911. I have two handouts. I'm here this evening on behalf of the 911 Center. April the 11th through the 15th is National Dispatchers Week for 911. And as the handouts show, the ones that I've just shown you, Maryland State Senator Cheryl Cagan, she talks about changes made to the 911 Center, and the headline reads, "County Officials Hear About Next Generation 911 Center's Role of the Hero Behind the Headset." And that's exactly the way I feel about our, our employees. The second handout I showed you is when the 911 Center actually was up and running, it was before January 31st, 1992, but the headlines of the paper, and this is one of the former employees, Polly, he has passed away, but you can see we've come a long way with those, see those big computers that are there? We've come a long way since then. In April 5th of 1993, Commissioner Worster and Commissioner Paz, Norm Paz, I'm sure you all remember, they had a proclamation for the week of April the 11th through the 17th in '93 for the National Public Safety Week. I also wanted to report that last year in 2020, we had 59,645 emergency calls into the center, of which we dispatched, we had 166,610 total calls, and we dispatched 114,152 calls in 2020. In 2021, we had 59,000 emergency calls. We dispatched 168, we had 168,936 total calls into the center in 2021. We dispatched 136,268 calls. And I also looked up, in 2010, we had. we had a hundred and forty-seven thousand, forty-eight total calls into the center. One more thing that you might be interested in, in 2021, we now received text messaging. We had seventeen hundred and eighty-six uh, total text calls into the center last year. Something new that's been implemented, so. Appreciate your, uh, attendance to this, and if you have a chance, April eleventh to the fifteenth, it is 911 Appreciation Week. And if you have a chance, stop in and tell the people in there, uh, thank you, and praise them for their service, the heroes behind the headsets.
Absolutely. Thank you, Barb. And if anybody else, if you can't make it that week, all you got to do is let Barb know, um, and she's happy to show you around in there. They're very, they do a great job, and she's very proud of everything in there, so.
And on a side note, Mr. Ledlow was up here. Um, Rip Ledlow, I'm sure John Jones and myself, we remember when there wasn't an ambulance in Wantata, too. And down there, when they did get an ambulance, it was a basic life support ambulance. There were no, was no advanced life support. Also, before that ambulance, the, uh, funeral homes actually, in Wantata and Westville, actually took patients to the hospital with no any kind of even basic care. They just put them in the, in the hearse and took them to the hospital. We got that from Digger Weesjohn, from Weesjohn Funeral Home.
Kind of a conflict of interest there.
In Wantata, also peaks.
Want to come on? Yep.
Remember? Like old homewiki here tonight.
He's OP.
Thank you, Mr. President, honorable members of the council. I wanted to join my former colleague here. I've been retired for twenty-two years, Randy, and you're the same age as I am.
But from one job, from one job.
From EMS.
You retired from one.
From EMS. I was too young to retire. Uh, but I did serve there from nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen ninety-nine, and was the, one of the past administrators along with Barb. Uh, I want to thank Rip Ledlow for the comments he made because he's always been a stalwart supporter of that EMS, and his, his efforts just keep going. I don't know, if you, I, I do know this, uh, forty-one calls in a day is unbearable. When I ran twenty-four calls in a twenty-four hour period, that was almost impossible. I have to sit there uh, from my eight o'clock time that I got off, excuse me, until noon to write the reports to catch up because you couldn't. By the time you go to the call, you stabilize the patient, get him to the hospital, you restock the ambulance, clean the ambulance, and then you're ready for another call. That takes an hour minimum. So if you're, you can put that into perspective. If you're getting forty-one calls, that's forty-one hours in a twenty-four hour period. And that was spread over people shifting ambulances around to make that happen.
And at the time, we didn't have three ambulances in LaPorte that would take, you know, forty-one calls. We had two, one in Wantata, two in Michigan City. I mean, I even tried today to find out how many calls we had in nineteen ninety-three into the center for, you know, EMS and fire and everything, and I couldn't find any records. I called all the missionaries and everything. We couldn't find any. Sorry, John.
No, the three of us were there when the Port County won the five-time paramedic provider of the year award, when no other agency in the state had ever won it twice. And I can tell you that I'm extremely concerned about turnover. Uh, from the police department to EMS to the fire departments to everybody else, that we've fallen behind on our pay here. I don't think bonuses will fix that. I think better pay will. We lose our most talented, and we bring in whoever else doesn't have a job elsewhere. I think that that has to be corrected one way or the other, and if it's, if it's a tax, if you have no other way to correct it, and configure no other way to correct it, then you may have to do that tax. But I definitely know that the bleeding has to stop. I toured the, I toured the bases, and I'll end this right quick, Mr. President, but uh, LaPorte base, I could tell an attitude difference there when I was there. It's a nice new base. Morale was up, the attitude was up. And then I, I visited Michigan City base and Wantata base. And that's not a recurring operational annual expense as a business manager. Those are replaced. Those bases need to be torn down.
I agree.
They're in bad shape.
Wantata's been need to be torn down and improved for the last twenty years.
So I know that's probably salt in the wound because you've got a lot of other stuff on the agenda, and I just brought up one more thing. But um, I know you care. I know you're going to do something about it. I think the mayor of LaPorte has done an exceptional job for LaPorte, and I think he's well represented in his, in the things he said. So I'm here to just say that I back those efforts.
Great. Thank you both.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
As a former county councilman, um, I'm sure you've thought this through. Do you see any other long-term solution to the problem with ambulance bases, probably in the future, a new jail? Or remodeling of the jail? I mean, if, when we talk about, are you going to be able to spend all this money on these kinds of services? To me, I'm not sure that will even be enough. In fact, somebody asked in the Michigan City meeting, are you sure you're, he asked Mr. Dermody, are you sure you're asking for enough at this point in time? Do you see any other potential for a long to, long-term resolution since they capped on the property taxes? And we lose approximately fifteen million a year. You had a lot of years up here.
Yeah, and you know, and of course, um, I haven't been able to keep up with your current situation and what balances you have, and which funds, and what's available. I, I, I think, I think we're behind, and we need to catch up. And then obviously, as you said, plan for the future. It should all be with one brush stroke, but I, I would, I would do all the above as fast as I could to get us back to a repairable situation, uh, which is increase salaries, retain talent. And I'm not going to say it in any softer way than that. We don't want to train these people and get all their experience and their life-saving experience and their uh, life-protection experience with the police department, and then let them go somewhere else for a few more dollars. Uh, as far as the Michigan City base and the Wantata base, I'd use capital outlays right now that you have available because you're already, you've already got that fixed structure. That's not increased operational add-ons for an annual budget. I, I would level Michigan City base and build that starting tomorrow along with your.
We have some, we have something later on our agenda about the Michigan City base, so.
That's good, and I heard you say something about acquiring property. So I, I know that you guys are heading in the right direction, but I guess the answer, Councilman Cunningham, is that, uh, I, I don't see a long-term fix from my end of this, of your table. And that's why I said if you can find another way, of course, that's, that should be an optional bargaining chip on the table. But with, without that, and I don't see that from my perspective, as you asked me to, um, I, I'm willing to pay the tax to get the service we need. I don't want to pay a tax, and I'm willing to pay that tax.
And keep the service we have.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Continued service, Barb. Any other department heads? Any other?
Just me, Jeremy from the Parks Department.
Just me, yeah.
So back to you. Wanted to update you on our Bloom project. We're almost done with the restroom. As you know, we built that in-house. And it should be open here within the next couple of weeks, so when the weather gets nice, should have it done. The playground, as I said, I think last month, it kind of stalled out. The, um, because of all the rain we got, the, the, the site got very muddy, and they weren't able to get in there, but the con- the contractors assure me they'll be back as soon as, as soon as it dries up, which it's getting there, but I know we're calling for another three-quarters of an inch of rain this week, so hopefully they'll be back. Um, the other thing I wanted to to talk to you about was I, I sent you all an email today. Um, I got some pricing on, um, a bioswale rain garden thing at, at Bloom County Park. Um, and pricing was for the design of this. So this is something I asked for in that ARP, uh, request that I sent at the beginning of this, this, this whole thing. Um, and, and what, what happened, has been happening for years out there at Bloom, is that we have a big parking lot. It was gravel before, and it was a problem. It drained into a, a, a a blow area, and then right across the road in their, on their covert into, um, a, a field right across the, the road. And washes it out and erosion, and we have issues there. Now that, you know, we paved the parking lots, we didn't really add anything, but we paved the parking lot. Runoff happens much quicker. We, we, we planned all along to put in a, a rain gardener bioswale. And what I'd like to do is try to get this design work done so we can move forward with this, um, with this bioswale. Um, originally, I had said it was going to cost us sixty thousand dollars, but um, what it, what is, what I've been able to do was I picked up, uh, the plants already, uh, through a reduced rate, and then Nicole Messicar has already given us some other plants that will be planted in there when this is all done, and, you know, dug out and all that stuff. So the, the, the design work is looking to be an estimate of three thousand dollars to get the design work done. And then, um, Mark Parkman, who owns the field right across the street, is, we hope to have him do the digging, you know, to, to do the excavation to help us out there. And, and the pri- I don't have any pricing on all of that, but, but estimated at sixty thousand, it's going to be a lot less than that because of what we're looking at as far as the plant materials and uh, my hope, my hope is to do a volunteer planting, uh, to get students involved, and then some volunteer groups involved to actually do the planting, which will save us thousands as well, so.
So what do you need to get it started?
The three thousand would get the design work done. Um, so, so I was hoping for, I know I can't get, you know, a final say, but I was hoping to get a motion of support for the three thousand to get the design work, if, if that's what the council.
I'd like to make the motion to support for three thousand dollars for the design work.
And I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Ms. Gremorosa. Are there any other questions or comments regarding that? That now be placed on our next April agenda for appropriation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Good job. Any other department head? Any other department head? Any other department head? Department head is now closed. Move on to liaisons.
I'm here on Zoom. Hi.
Sounds like Amanda, but I.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Can't see you, but we can hear you.
Afternoon. Amanda Laniers, County Health Department. I just wanted to come in and briefly let you know that we are starting a new program in the health department. We are starting a femur team, which is a fetal infant mortality review team. It's a evidence-based process that lets us investigate the circumstances around a fetal infant death. And LaPorte County is currently has the eleventh highest fetal infant deaths within the state. So we will be starting this team, and it will be housed within the county health department. We will be hiring a coordinator for this. And to let you know that this is going to be one hundred percent grant-funded, so there will not be any, um, county dollars used to pay this person. I'll just let you know, if anybody had any questions about exactly what that was, or what, how it was going to take place, I'd be happy to answer that, and I can always come back and give you a update on that program once it's up and running.
Now, kudos, kudos to you and to the Healthcare Foundation for working so closely together on this, so. Great job.
Thank you.
This is something that's desperately needed, so. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on Zoom? Anybody else on Zoom? Hearing none. Department head is now closed. Moving on to liaisons and reports. Terry?
Uh, yeah, I spoke to the treasurer today. She says she collected the largest amount in taxes this last year, and her office is preparing for stuffing and mailings to go out for April eighth or right after that. And then, uh, basically, the sheriff has updated you all with his emails, so uh, he's taking care of his department there, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gremorosa?
I've spoken to all my liaison departments, and everything is running smooth.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenbaum?
Um, attended the RDC meeting. Uh, there are some, uh, things that, uh, come up. But FMEC, uh, will be discussing that later today, so I'm going to uh, pass on going and speaking further and everything else. Um, you've heard from Jeremy, and so we're doing well elsewhere. Thank you.
Mr. Yagelski?
I think it's time, Mr. President.
Mr. Cunningham?
Mr. President, we're on page one of a four-page agenda, and it's already passed seven o'clock, so I'm going to wave my liaison report.
Mr. Mullenauer?
Uh, just have one thing, and it's, um, in the recent, in the past recent weeks, I've discussed with, uh, our new EMA Assistant Director, Rob Sabey, the great need and, and a quote for the emergency siren that has been disconnected in the town of Westville uh, due to the old police department being, being sold to a private individual. And tonight, I'll present under Old Business Item Five, details of that discussion with, uh, uh, Mr. Director's, Assistant Director Sabey, uh, Westville Town Board President Mike Albert, and the Westville Street Department Superintendent Mark Hale. Thank you.
Thank you. And my liaison report is, if you want to know what I'm doing, give me a call later. I'll be happy to tell you everything I'm doing, so. We'll move on to correspondence. Mr. Auditor?
Uh, Your Honor, we have, uh, two letters, one from the LaPorte County Association of Realtors regarding the lit tax. Is it the council's pleasure to have it read?
We got it.
Yeah.
It's a letter in support.
Forget it, forget it.
Letter in support of the lit tax.
Thank you.
And there's also a letter from Mr. Hall, Mr. Hollifield, that I believe I've been asked to read, or no, I don't.
I believe he requested it to be read.
Um, this is dated, uh, today, actually. So, uh, this is from Steve Hollifield. And it says, uh, it's addressed to the council. The LaPorte County Council, please allow me to start by saying, as I have always said, no one is saying that our emergency services do not deserve more pay and better equipment, but myself, as well as others, are saying is the method of funding is wrong. Raising taxes on the public, who is already facing fuel, food, and basic everyday necessities at record prices plus inflation at levels not seen since the late seventies and early eighties, is completely wrong. It is not the place of any public servant to tell a single parent or a family living paycheck to paycheck that the tax is an insignificant amount. I'm asking you to look at other options first, in cuts to staff, excluding police, fire, and EMS, take-home vehicle use, and other expenses, things that families and businesses have to do. I am proposing an idea that would allow more public input. I have run this past our state representative and our county clerk. I am waiting for more input from them. It simply is why not place a petition, for lack of a better word, at the exit of polling stations this May. It would simply say what the tax is about and for, then ask whether the voter is in favor or against. This would allow them to already have seen their new property tax bills and determine whether they want a new tax. Uh, one side for yes and one for no. The speed at which this is being pushed through is extremely questionable, in my opinion. Thank you for taking the time to listen. Respectfully, Steve Hollifield.
Did you, could you clarify, did you say inclusive or exclusive of police, fire, and EMS?
Um, I am asking you to look at other options first, in cuts to staff, excluding police, fire, EM and EMS.
This one.
And can we make sure we all get the copy of that?
I believe it.
I didn't, I didn't remember. We got it, then I apologize.
Yep, it'll go out. Any other, um, correspondence?
No, sir.
Move on to, um, ordinances and resolutions. First item is Resolution Number twenty-two dash oh-three A. We're going to do the public hearing first, Mr. This is Peepers and Salmon Company Incorporated. You want to give a little? Yeah?
This is a public hearing.
Well, it looks like he's going to talk before we do a public hearing. That's why.
That's, that's what I'm trying to.
That's why I was kind of.
If, if I may, Mr. President.
Have a public. Mr. President, motion to have.
I have it.
Motion to open a public hearing.
All right. We have a motion to open a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Public co- public comment is now open. If anybody would like to speak on the confirmatory resolution that we're going to look at tonight regarding Peepers and Salmon Company. Anybody from the public? Anybody from the public? Anybody from the public? Public comment is now closed.
Anybody from Zoom?
Go ahead.
Anybody from Zoom?
Anybody from Zoom? I'm sorry. No. All right. Is there anything you, uh? So then we'll move on to Resolution twenty, twenty-two-two dash three oh-three A, Peepers and Salmon, the confirmatory. It's your pleasure, by title. Is anybody, you want it by title only?
Motion approved by title only.
Second.
Motion and a second. Motion by Ms. Yagelski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum, by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Uh, by title only, Mr. Auditor?
This is a resolution of the LaPorte County Council determining that the qualifications qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met and confirming a declaratory resolution adopted by the LaPorte County Council. resolution adopted by the LaPorte County Council with respect to Peepers and Salmon Company.
Thank you. What's your pleasure?
Present motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-03A.
Second. Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Cunningham. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to Resolution Number 2022-03B, Alexander Chemical, public hearing. The public hearing is now open for Alexander Chemical. Anybody from the public? Anybody from the public? Oh, we got one. You gotta come down here. Please.
Okay.
Is that somebody on Zoom, too?
I think I heard somebody.
Dawn Milner. I would just like to know what it entails.
So there is what they're, this is for an expansion that they're doing, so they're going to come from some type of assistance with their taxes, future taxes on the expansion that they're doing?
And what is that expansion?
Mr. Rodriguez.
Well, Mr. Rodriguez is going to talk, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is truly my pleasure to, to be here this evening. I have with us this evening the.
So, so we're going to close public hearing, or we're going to just have this during public hearing?
Well, you have a, you had a question, so let's.
So let's leave this on. I keep it on. That's what I, I just want to make sure we're following it right. Yep. Good job.
Yeah. Keeping with tradition, it's certainly prudent to, to give a snapshot, and we're fortunate to have with us this evening the plant manager to detail for you this evening the expansion of a headquarters facility. And I'd like to, it's truly my pleasure to introduce Mr. Rob Davidson, who will very quickly give a snapshot overview of, of this expansion for the benefit of the public.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Alexander Chemical has been in business since 1950. We are a critical for infrastructure business in the wastewater, water industry. So we're critical to supply chain and supplying chemicals that help with water purification and sanitization for hospitals, schools, homes. Seventy percent of the products that we produce go into local municipalities and water treatment facilities in a 250-mile radius around our plant. Thirty percent of the product goes into other verticals like industrial manufacturing, power generation, chemical, refining pulp and paper, and pharmaceutical biotech. We are a distribution platform with a light manufacturing and an integrated logistics arm. So we're vertically integrated. What we don't manufacture, we pull in via rail and repackage. We are wanting to build a new headquarters and maintenance facility to improve the site, attract talent, and facilitate growth within the facility. If we can go a couple, a couple of slides up, this is the facility as it stands today. It's an old munitions factory. Obviously, there's a couple buildings out front here that, that are dilapidated that we want to refresh and renew. If you go up, go up again real quick for me. One left, just a site survey. If you go up one more. So this is what the, the new facility would look like. We'd have the new HQ on the left side. We would level the building on the right and prepare that foundation for future expansion, a new guard shack, and then redo the parking lot. And then, if you go up again, it'll show the, the maintenance facility that we're going to do back there in the top, the top right corner. So the building was actually designed by a world-renowned architect. His name is Dirk Lohan. Something that you guys might be familiar with is he, he designed and built Soldier Field in Chicago. The building takes on more of, if you go up again, one more for me, please.
Oh.
There you go. So the building, the building takes on more of a, a natural look using sustainable materials. It's a large wooden structure. The building cantilevers over the original footprint of the existing foundation, which allows more office space and a unique design. The overall design has an open feeling on the inside, allowing for a lot of natural light. So if you go up one more, we can kind of get a, a view. Go up one more. I'm sorry, this is put together by an architect. One more. So this kind of gives you a feel of the, the way the office space is going to lay out. We're going to have 18 offices, meeting rooms, a large training room, file storage. If you go up one more, it'll kind of give you, one more, please. And there you go, an interior view. It's, it's basically, you'll be able to see through the whole building from one side to another. So it's really going to create a collaborative space to, to engage growth within, within the company. Other site improvements include a, the, a new security building station to provide more efficient and secure protection of the facility, a larger maintenance facility for the plant, for the plant and the logistics arm, improved parking lots and landscaping. These plans will dramatically improve the appearance of Alexander Chemical and will make this business an even more attractive place to work and to do business with. We currently have 42 employees with Alexander Chemical, and through these improvements, we'll be looking to add six additional to our headcount. These will be in sales, leadership, and maintenance. We also employ 15 additional people through circle transportation, which is our integrated logistics arm, 14 drivers, and one supervisor. And this will also add approximately 75 temporary jobs for construction and really elevate the look of the park to possibly attract additional businesses into KIP. It's a $5.6 million investment in real estate, an $850,000 investment in personal property through manufacturing, research and development, logistics, and IT, and we are seeking a 10-year tax payment.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Ms. Yagowski?
Sure. Real quick question, I apologize. The, this has been a big, to our heart, too, this project, because that area, you know, we tried to put some investment out there. Are you going to need additional spur or something? What about the rail? I tried to see it in your, I couldn't see it in your.
Yeah, okay. So we can talk about the rail for sure. Tony and his group was very instrumental in getting high-speed internet out there for us, which, which was a huge pickup for us. So we've got gig, gig-speed internet. The rail is a situation for us. Right now, we currently are really held captive by the short line coming into the park. We have CSX to the south, the CN to the north. And again, when you look at the products that we sell and the markets that we sell into, we win or lose business by about three hundredths of a cent. It's hypercompetitive. So having the ability to pull in from the north or south with additional rail lines would create more, you know, more competitive for us in buying product. A lot of the stuff we pull off the Gulf Coast, so again, it has to come up through Chicago. We hit switching fees, a lot of them coming through with the short line. Having the CSX and CN in the park would be instrumental to success in our business.
So that's part of the plan, or the future plan, or?
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm not in control of, of pulling the rail in. I know that some folks down.
I can tell you.
Have, have pulled in, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I did, I knew what RDC.
No, 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 no.
I'm talking about his, I'm talking about his future plan.
Yeah.
I was trying to see where you were, that's, you, where, where would be an ideal place to bring in the rail?
Well, we have rail in the facility.
The rail's at the building. This is the office building.
Yeah, so this is the office building. We have rail into the plant, and we've actually added an additional spur to hold additional chlorine cars for bleach manufacturing. So we're, we just need the additional spurs coming into the park to create the.
Thanks, sir.
Competitive, competitive nature there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
Did we answer her question?
Did we answer your question, ma'am? Is that? Okay. I can't, you gotta come up front. You gotta, you gotta come up to the microphone. We can't.
The tractor can kill drainage in any way.
Does it have drainage in any way?
Drainage regards to.
What are you doing regarding the drainage?
Retention pond.
There's a retention pond right there on the property, so they're gonna, yeah, they're going to capture all their runoff.
By law, as part of the procedure, before a building permit can be issued, they have to, they have to show how they're going to manage all onsite stormwater. They will have to, which, which includes detention of that stormwater.
Any other public comments? Hearing none. Public comment, what?
Did we get her name for the record? Because I know.
Dawn Milnick. She said Dawn Milnick. Correct?
Dawn Milnick. Thank you.
Is that correct? Dawn Milnick. Right. Public comment is now closed. Moving on to Resolution 2022. Motion by Ms. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum, by title only. There's no objections. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Mr. Auditor?
A resolution of the LaPorte County Council determining the qualifications for the economic revitalization area have been met and confirming a declaratory resolution adopted by the LaPorte County Council as pertains to Alexander Chemical.
What's your pleasure? Motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Ms. Graham Rosa. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next item is.
Harrison.
Yep, I know. Just making sure we didn't have to do a public hearing. Resolution 2022-03C, Harrison Electric, declaratory. Read this.
Read by title only, 2022-03.
Great.
I'll second. By title only.
Motion by Ms. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. By title only, Vaughn? I'm sorry, Mr. Deputy Auditor. I'm sorry.
A resolution of the LaPorte County Council identifying and declaring portions of the LaPorte County, Indiana, be designated as an economic revitalization area pursuant to IC 6-1.1-12.1-1.
Thank you. What's your pleasure?
Present motion to approve 2022-03C.
Second. Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Cunningham.
One, one question, Mr. President.
On the question?
Not really a question, I was making a statement. Brought this company in 10 years ago. Of all, I think that Mr. Cunningham can verify this one. This gentleman goes out to the schools, he gets the kids out of schools, teaches them the method, the, how to rewind motors. They stay with him. He, he doesn't have to go out and get extra people. At this day and age where you can't find people, this gentleman brings kids and he teaches them from start to finish. Give him a lot of credit, so.
Great job.
I would agree.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
So this matter will be set for public hearing next month?
Yeah, at our regular meeting.
Yes.
Yes. Next item is Resolution 2022-303D, Sullivan Paltech, declaratory. Mr. Yagowski?
Present motion to approve 2022-3D by title only.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum, by title only. Mr. Auditor?
This is a resolution of the LaPorte County Council identifying and declaring portions of the LaPorte County, Indiana, be designated as an economic revitalization area pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1-1 at SEAC, as pertains to Sullivan Paltech.
Great.
What's your public hearing for that, then?
Is that a motion?
Motion for public hearing for also Harrison and Sullivan.
I thought we were doing that the next month.
It's a motion to approve.
That's just a have.
Oh, make the motion.
Make the motion to approve, and then we set.
To prove it for next month.
Okay.
Second, then.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is Ordinance 2022-03A, Animal Shelter Adoption Spay and Neuter Fee Account. I'm going to, Attorney Guy DiMartino, do you want to speak on this, why the need for this was?
Right. So the original spay and neuter account was, was promulgated in the 1990s. At that time, they did, you did a fee for service with, with the vets, and they were using that money to offset the vet fees for the spay and neuter. But now, the vets are part-time, and they're paid a stipend or, or an amount. And the services that Animal Shelter is using, they're also doing general veterinary services. So, so these funds at that time were a reverting account, and so it just doesn't work. So, so, so the money in the funds now will be used to offset all the medical care by the veterinarians, vet techs. And it'll be a non-reverting account, because there is going to be less money in that account than we're paying on a yearly basis for the vet and vet techs.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Could we do this on, do we, we could do this on two readings tonight?
Yeah, so if we have, somebody will move to suspend the rule.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to suspend the rule for Ordinance Number 2022-03A.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum to suspend the rules here on both readings tonight. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. So, do you want to read this? Do we need to read this both times, then?
Well, first, you need, you'll need a motion to read by title only.
We need a motion, read Ordinance Number 2022-03A by title only.
Oh, by title, okay. Second that.
All right. Motion by Ms. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I don't have a copy.
All right. By title only.
I, I don't have a copy of that.
It was, it was up top there.
Oh.
Is that it?
It says spay and neuter account. You can't miss it.
I'll pull it up.
All right. Did we have?
Down here, you just sent it for a second, just.
We were waiting for you.
Yeah. We weren't going to give it back.
We weren't going to part it.
We did that before. Ordinance 2022-03A, Amendment to Ordinance 1991-. You told me to be louder. This is Amendment to Ordinance 1991-02, Animal Shelter Adoption and Spay and Neuter Fees Account. Can they hear me back there?
No, I can't even hear you here.
Can't even hear?
Emote?
Emote? Ordinance 2022-03A, Amendment to Ordinance 1991-02, Animal Shelter Adoption and Spay and Neuter Fees Account.
Great. Now, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Ms. Graham Rosa. We need, still need to do two separate readings. So this is still the first reading?
Still on one.
Still on one. All those in favor on the first reading, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to approve Ordinance Number 2022-03A on second.
To read by title only.
Oh, by title only?
Second. Motion by Ms. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum, by title only. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. By title, I'm going to try harder this time. This is
an amendment to Ordinance 1991-02, Animal Shelter Adoption and Spay and Neuter Fees Account.
Motion to approve the Ordinance 2022-03A on the second reading now.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Ms. Graham Rosa. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
All righty then. Next item under new business, consider approval of president's authorization to hire replacement positions for LaPorte County Highway to Equipment Operators.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mr. Cunningham for the highway equipment operators. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item is Human Resource Director. Recommendation that the Assistant Director, Monique Thomas, be assigned as acting, not acting, interim director until replacement is found upon Barb's retirement.
Is this a motion of support?
This is a.
No.
Permission. It's a permission to hire their advertising for the position, and it's a recommendation from the council. The HR director is a supermajority, so it takes the council and the commissioners to do that.
So we need to approve this, just like we did a.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, second by Mrs. Graham Rosa. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
Second issue, go ahead.
Oh, next item is MS Four Director.
Back up, I'm sorry. I thought you were looking for those opposed.
I said those opposed.
Okay.
Were you opposed?
No, I'm not opposed, but I want to add another one before we move on.
Okay.
In light of the fact that our council will not meet again prior to Ms. Mossman's departure and Ms. Thomas's move up to the interim director's position, I think we need to authorize her to increase the hours for her part-time staff or hire additional part-time help to help in that office because they were swamped with two full-time people and now they're going to be down to one full-time and one part-time. So I think that I would make the motion that with authorization of the President only, I don't think the council needs to reconvene to authorize some additional hours. It will be less than we're paying out now anyway because when the salary of the director is gone and the interim director moves into that position, we're going to be one full-time salary short for whatever the period is, whether it's a month or two months, we're going to have to have some additional help. So I would make the motion that we give the President authority to resolve that issue.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, second by Mrs. Graham Rosa. Can I just interject one thing that just for clarification and when we ask Monique Thomas to fill that position, it will be at the director's pay? Just...
I would 100% agree.
Right. I just want, I don't want there to be any confusion, so we can re-add that.
And I think we should give the caveat that we are not taking any step to fill the position this thing. We're just filling an interim position. And another thing, in protection of Monique Thomas, the other applicants will not go to the HR department. They will go directly to the commissioner's office, which makes way more sense than her handling potential competitors.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Can you rephrase your motion so it's clear? You are authorizing the President to fill a position temporarily.
Or increase hours.
Or increase hours with human resources.
For human resources with the direction of... You alone can get with the interim director and work that out as to how it will work. I mean, I don't know.
Right.
Whether we're going to give more hours to the present part-time person or hire another part-time person, but we're just authorizing him to work with HR to resolve the problem that will obviously exist in two weeks.
Right.
But they will still be short one full-timer?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay. So however you have to work it out with two part-timers or a full-timer?
Mr. President, just note, since it's a super majority, the votes today, the seven of them would actually activate the super majority. It's not combined council commissioners as a super majority. So if you vote for this, it's going to be appointed today.
It'd be the majority.
Right. I don't, just wanted to make it a record.
And just so it's clear, there's no implied additional appropriation of any kind of that, correct?
Correct.
In that, in your motion?
Correct.
It will be actually a negative.
Right.
The appropriation will be less than what we already have appropriated.
Right. Good with that?
Yes, thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Do you want a roll call just to be sure on the seven?
Who was it? I think everybody said aye, didn't they?
I didn't hear Mike, I'm sorry.
Mike shaking his head, yes.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Mike.
We have the full seven.
The record show Mike shook his hand, yes.
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you, Mike.
Next item. We'll move on. Lepore County Human Resources requesting permission for Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy.
Oh, no, we missed MS Four Director.
Wait, 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 back up. All right, that's on my list. MS Four Director. We need permission to fill the vacancy of an MS Four.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullenhour. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item was number four, was clerk permission to buy two computers. I've received a text. She said that IT took care of her. She does not need to purchase two new computers.
Motion to approve that action by the clerk.
By proclamation unanimously, yeah.
IT director.
Yeah.
We love saying.
So we'll move on to number, what would have been number five is now number four. Approval of the declaration of emergency repair for purposes of emergency repair of the grandstand seating Lepore County Fair will also be requesting that this be advertised for the special meeting in April for funding. Presentation to follow.
Mr. President, are we not going to do the?
Number three.
Wagner, Irving, Irwin, and Shealy? We'll catch that after.
We are, we are, we are. We'll get to that.
Okay.
All right.
I like to mix it up a little bit.
This is a little confusing, Mr. Auditor, I must say, by having the agenda. Just saying. So let's hold on a minute, Larry. Let's go to, let's go back to that Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy report by the Human Resources Director. She, hear her online?
I am here, yes. Good evening, everyone. Barb Mossman, Human Resources Director. I am requesting, I have requested from Wagner, Irwin, Shealy a quote for a salary, external salary study. Unfortunately, I did not get that in time to have that dollar amount posted. So I am coming before you for requesting favorable support on that. The first quote that I had requested was for all county employees to have the external salary market study conducted, provide an updated external midpoint salaries, prepare updated pay plans and provide you with cost analysis for placing those employees on the proposed pay grids. The cost for all those employees on that study, on that quote, sorry, I just lost the dollar amount, $43,620. The second quote that I had asked for was going to exclude elected officials, chief deputies, EMS, merit, and jail poll positions. The salary, external salary study would also include the external midpoint salaries and placing those employees on those pay grids. And the cost on that salary study was $19,680. And as I said, I'm just asking for your support for that to be placed on the April agenda for the acting interim director, Monique Thomas, to come back before you.
Mr. President, I'd like a motion to support the third proposal, $19,000.
The third? I thought that was the second one.
First one, the fall one that she didn't want. The second one was.
$19,000.
And then the third was minus the poll. No, it was fit, no, it wasn't. She had three.
There was only two proposals.
I thought she said she had one for fall, for everybody.
She did have one for fall and then she had one with taken away.
Okay.
There were only two.
The second one.
All right. Motion by Ms. Jagowski for the $19,680 version. Option two.
Option two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gardner.
I can look down there, see when you're down there, Terry. Are you down there?
Is there any other questions or comments?
I don't know if I might be able to comment. I, I, I'm just wondering, or just want to inform the council. I spent a lot of time looking at the old study myself and I don't, I mean, obviously $43,000 is a lot of money, but the old study suggested that some of the poll people were less underpaid than other county areas. And clearly, we know that that's an area that changed dramatically because of COVID and other reasons and other departments jacking up their amounts over the last several years. So I, I, I don't know. I think you might need that information too. But I'm not, so I'm not sure. Again, I'm not a councilman, but I just feel like, how do you delineate why those were excluded in the $19,000? Is what I, unfortunately, didn't have a chance to have that discussion with you, Barb. I, so maybe that's an account, a question the council cares about, but I felt the responsibility to bring it up.
Mr. President, I think the council does care about the... The problem with this whole thing is that, again, this isn't a magic wand. We're going to be able to switch, change everything over tomorrow. This is just to try to get some numbers for us. We have, we have a presentation made to us by the state of Indiana. We also can get the stuff that, we have the information from Lepore County. Somehow, I don't know why, we're not presenting that to the state because we're not, we're never, we're not listed in it, or we should be. But we can, we, we have done it before. We can collect this data ourselves. It's not very difficult. So I, the reason why I voted for the last one is because those are things that are the most important part that need to be corrected right now. But we're not going to be able to, be able to correct this whole county and the issues we talked about before with pay raises at this time.
I would just emphasize as financial advisor to the county or chief financial officer that if you do want to have a sense of what amount of lit you need, you need, and obviously the lit frees up money for general fund as we all, we all know and are straight, have been straightforward about that, the more information, the better, determining what rate that lit needs to be.
I prefer to do my own job, so it's okay.
Right. I think we can figure that part out.
Yeah, I think we can do.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. So that'll be placed on our next agenda for funding. Thank you, Barb.
Thank you.
Comment?
Comment.
If we're doing this type of study, shouldn't we also be doing or requesting an efficiency study?
Well, that's a whole nother.
That's a whole thing you'd have to sit there and ask for a project.
Okay.
I just want to say.
I'm just putting it out there that maybe that should be taken into consideration as well.
And Barb, you're going to be, Barb, Barb? You're going to be gone. So I just want to say.
Yes.
Thank you for your service to the county over the years. Ms. Mossman's leaving. She's taking another job. So thank you very much for all you've done and we appreciate it. And good luck.
Thank you very much. It's been an interesting journey over the last 20 years. So thank you every much, everyone for your support and I wish the county the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is item number three, maintenance presentation on findings of outsourcing housekeeping at the Michigan City Courthouse.
Good evening, members of the council. Larry Levandowski, Director of Facilities. Back in January, Councilman Jagowski asked that we approached the commissioners and about the housekeeping in Michigan City and outsourcing. So we sent a letter out. We got, we reached out to eight different companies. We advertised. We only had three companies that responded back to us. One of the companies was Club Clean, which they were involved in the cleaning, the final cleaning of the courthouse at the end of construction. So they had a little insight of what was going on. Their yearly, their yearly came back at $467,844. Another company, Spick and Span, they came back at yearly of $218,400 and then properly cleaned. The other ones gave us a flat rate. Properly Clean gave us an hourly estimated rate and they came back at $108,160. One of the things that I want to state with that Properly Clean, they figured only 32 and a half hours for two employees at that building. Knowing that we have two employees there that are working 40 hours a week and they're struggling to get it done, I'm concerned with that, those kind of hours that they would come back and raise that hourly wage. I'm just speaking out in my concern on that and we would come back. So I did figure out what it would be for them doing it at 40 hours because their wages were $32 an hour they did in there. And it was $133,120. We also presented to you what it cost us to, if we were to be able to hire two full-time employees in housekeeping. It would be $114,790. We did take this to the commissioners at the meeting and they voted unanimously for us to come before you and seek out to hire two employees. But that's it. Your, what your recommendation is how you'd like to proceed with this.
Mr. President, Ms. Jagowski. So we have this understood as sort of like what Mr. Rosenbaum asked for. This is, when we hear that we can't find contractors and that, we can't find contractors. When we heard that, there was some favoritism on the last contractors. We got three bids to come in for it. I wanted to also put it to bed and find out what, what, you know, more or less what we could do and what the possibilities of our... We have employees. We had employees before, but because they were saying they were working both jobs that they had these contractors out in that field. We still have the employees. We don't, we don't need any additional employees right now. This was just to see if we could get contractors come in because we had people leaving all the time. And then they could always use them somewhere else and then, like we always do, we wait for them, for somebody to leave and we could fill that job. So I don't know why it was so important to contract it out before, but I wanted to get a true study on it. And without much effort at all, we got three firms coming in here. And your comment about the last two, they got, maybe they got a little more money. They're going to work faster. Some people are more motivated.
I just wondered.
And I agree, but some people are motivated for a reason, so.
Right.
So what's your pleasure?
I think we should just keep what we have right now. We have employees we have right now. So my motion is, I'll follow the commissioner because the commissioner's already said that they don't want.
Commissioners recommended that they hire two employees.
Our commissioners also don't like our, yeah, I'm going to ask you a question. Our commissioners also don't like our work or, our ordinance for hiring. They would hire 100 more people. We've had to stop them before. So my motion would be just let it go as we have. We have the employees right now.
So council?
So right now, I think my motion.
Can I say one more thing? So when I first came into this position, we had five full-time housekeepers and four part-time. Right now, we're, we've taken on the Michigan City Courthouse and all this. We have four full-timers, that's it. There are no part-timers. There are no part-timers. We have four full-timers. We've doubled the size of that Michigan City courthouse.
We actually decreased it, but okay. You take, you take another courthouse down to make this courthouse. We have, we have the Lee Street property that's not, not being utilized, it's moved in here. We haven't, we haven't brought any more employees in. We haven't brought any more buildings in. We have offices that we have right now. I have no problem with that. But we have the same amount. Everybody wants to save that, but we do, so.
Two, two housekeepers cleaning all the buildings in the outskirts of Michigan City. You know, and I'll say this. Anybody that's seen me, I've been cleaning the Hyler Building to take the relief off. So every night I stay and clean these, the Hyler Building. I'm not gonna tell you that, you know, it's within my job. It is to make sure, to try and take some of the relief off these housekeepers. But these housekeepers are working so hard right now, they don't have the time to think. It's, they're not getting the job done the proper way. We gotta think of, I'm trying to think of the employees that we have.
Okay, Mr. Levendowski, I'm gonna tell you now, I know the part-time people come in, they're running circles around some of your employees. So I'm gonna tell you right now.
There are no part-time cleaners.
Yes, there is.
No.
Any part-time cleaners?
Not in Michigan City, in Lapeur.
I don't have any part-time in Lapeur.
Who's the person, did she just leave here?
Yes. We had, we had a lady. We had a part-time lady, she left to go back into Michigan to work full, work part-time.
Okay, but she was working for you. She was running circles around a lot of our people, so I understand that. So I know what you're talking about, Mr. Levendowski, I do.
In June, we approved for a maintenance person because somebody was gonna be retiring at the end of the year, correct? Did that person retire?
That person has not retired yet.
So you're up one person in the maintenance.
Correct.
Is it possible to have that maintenance person go to the cleaning side and clean there?
We have a ma- we, as maintenance, we are helping the ladies clean right now. We're helping them clean right now.
But you're up one person, right? Because when we brought them in in June, somebody was supposed to retire in December or January and nobody retired, correct?
Correct.
So you're up one person.
We are up one per, one person.
So you're asking for two people for cleaning. You're up one maintenance person. Could you take that maintenance person and put him on cleaning? Now you would only be, try it out with, with the three people there and just see what happens.
I think that's what he's doing. He's got maintenance guys cleaning.
We've been, we've been doing that. We've been trying to clean it with maintenance people along with my, myself and my assistants.
Mr. President, clarification. No, she's saying that when Larry, that Mr. Levendowski came to us, we hired him on the condition that he's gonna retire. He's not acknowledging that, he's not cleaning. That person can continue cleaning. They have the extra person. They weren't supposed to have an extra person. Nobody retired. That's just, that's what you're saying.
You looking at me or are you looking at?
I'm correcting, because you said that, that's what he's saying. He's not saying it. What, what Grant Rosa is saying is that.
We put on an extra person.
We already got a person.
And, and he said that maintenance staff is helping with the cleaning, which is good because he has an extra person, yeah. Right, I agree. We're on the same page.
I, I'm just saying, I think we need, what I'm asking for is, I'm asking for the council to consider, you know, and I, I'd be happy with one extra housekeeper right now. Just to give some relief to the, to the ladies that we do have.
And you can't find any part-time?
Part-time, we've been advertising part-time since early last year. We get one. I'll be honest, we have three people and they can't pass the test. We have the problem that they cannot find, they cannot.
Mr. President, that has been, motion, just so you know, that has been a contention of us. Why are the same requirements for a person working janitorial as a person that's working for?
You need to talk to the.
No, but I'm saying.
I, I agree, I agree.
We could, we have had people that want to work. We need to talk about why we can't employ them.
Right.
But we don't set those rules.
And what are we gonna do with the extra maintenance person?
He'll eventually, the other extra one, the one will retire.
Right.
He's gonna go away.
But in the meantime, since June, we've been paying an extra maintenance person. So we increased the staff by one on the maintenance side.
From part-time to full-time? You increased him from part-time to, he was already there.
Right. We increased him from part-time to full-time. He's still there and he's still, I mean, we've got him working, I mean, we've got.
How many part-timers do you have out in the fairgrounds right now?
Two. Two.
One female and one male?
The, the females have been working with us over here, helping us. You said, ask Farid, we have two people at the fairgrounds. I have one female part-timer also.
So the female is here cleaning?
She, well, whatever we've gotta do. She said, but she only works right now, she has 19 hours a week.
So potentially, when are you gonna lose the maintenance person?
When, we've had, we've had three people that keep telling me they're looking for other jobs. We've got one that, you know, said he's gonna retire. So it's, you know, I took the opportunity. I had a young gentleman come in, a very good worker. That's why I came to the council, hey, I've got this exceptionally good worker. Can we, trying to keep him before we lose him? And I lose one of the other people. So that's why I came to you with the knowledge that when we lose a person, we will not rehire again.
But for nine months, we've been paying this person and we haven't, and we, and right now you have, nobody scheduled to retire, correct?
Right now, I, I don't go and ask him every day, so I don't have anybody that's.
Right now, we've been paying for nine months and we have nobody scheduled to retire.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Yagowski.
Okay, Mr. Levendowski, according to the bid that you had out there, you asked for them to supply cleaning supplies. So if we don't go with anybody, who's picking up the additional cleaning supplies?
We, we supply, we've always supplied the cleaning.
Mr. President, Mr. Levendowski, I'm sorry. Mr. Levendowski, you had in your bids.
Right.
That they had to supply cleaning supplies.
Exactly.
Since we are gonna pick no contractors, where's the money gonna come from for the cleaning supplies?
Comes from maintenance. We've always.
So that, so your, your cost, did you explain it to commissioners that the cost is not the true cost? Because we're, if we take the cleaning supplies out, there's actually less, the money's actually less bid than it is. But we decided to put the cleaning supplies with the, with the department, the three groups that were bidding on this.
Right, and one of the things, the reason we did that is because a lot of time, we tried to, with a bad, especially our bank, we tried to save a lot of stuff.
Agreed.
And the concern I had is when we put it out there, of people, if we're supplying, we're supplying all the materials for them, it could become wasteful. We're trying to become less wasteful with as hard as products are coming nowadays. You know, toilet bowl cleaners, everything. We are struggling to get any kind of cleaning right now.
I understand, but your, your true bid that came out to us, the lowest bid you had was 122?
Right.
And minus 122, what would be the cleaning supplies that you would estimate for a year? Just an estimate.
For the Michigan City project, project, we might spend. It's hard to say because the new building, 15,000.
I see, 20 grand, 15,000.
Yeah.
So you're, you're basic, so you're basically got this, these two, two people coming clean for about 100,000, which is a lot cheaper if you had two full-time employees with benefits and everything else, right?
Correct.
This is where, this is where the study we talked about with, on cost savings. This is where the cost, they, they told the commissioners one thing, but they didn't tell it that they, there was actually knockoff another $20,000. And that's what you're, you're down to, where we could actually hire out these people since we have a hard time finding people, everybody claims. So this, but this, I say, we still consider this option we have. But of course, the commissioners put a combos to it.
So would your recommendation be to send it back to the commissioners for them to look at a true cost analysis of those?
Most, most would send the commissioners for a true cost analysis.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Cunningham, to send back to the commissioners for a true cost analysis. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item number five is the declar- declaration of emergency repair. And I've already read that and Larry's gonna do a presentation, so.
So.
You got some handouts?
Yep. Caitlin's gonna hand out a little bit of stuff and I'll get you update. So back on September 7th, we came to, before you for the infrastructure plan for the fairgrounds under the ARP. Part of that was the repair of the grandstands. In that time, we reached out to our insurance agent. We had a meeting with FEMC. Then we reached out to our insurance agent to find out who we could have do an inspection of the grandstands on the grounds. They instructed us to go to Homeland Security, which we did, and found over time that Homeland Security does no longer do the inspections. They in turn handed off to us two different firms for us to use. We reached out to one of the firms, which was ET Paddock Enterprises. As you'll see, they did a complete survey of the grounds. The grounds were, were not able to be done until March of this year because of snow and everything, they reached, when they reached out to us. We'll discuss the very, the main grandstands first. Main grandstands are a seating of 1,600 seats approximately. It's 150 foot long. You got it? Okay, they did a complete, and as you'll see on the screen. They did the, that's, that's the main grand, you'll see the open electrical panels, the look, open electrical panels in violation of the electrical codes that are at present time. It's not an outdoor box. So they brought up all these little, these items. You'll see in the photos that there's, that's, it's a metal structure. You'll see that a lot of the boards are rotted. We have been changing boards over time, trying to keep the worst boards, you know, taken care of. It's underside, the underside of the structure that is stated has several, several areas that have rusted and are in poor shape. It also states in the, in his, let me get that here. In his survey, the foundation, the ramp, all the ramps that lead up to it do not meet ADA compliant as of, as of right now. The foundation work underneath. Oh, well, here, we'll go back one picture, go back one picture. The gaps within are above four inches. All gaps in, on bleachers code right now have to be below a four-inch gap. So again, a lot of the things that he did, these are all violations of the codes that are in present date. Foundation work, you can see the deterioration of some of the pilasters underneath. There's, there's concrete that is deteriorated. There's heaving that has caused, been caused. Right there, you can see in the picture on the screen where it's heaved up. All those things have, they came up and to hit, and he brought back, a lot of the railings are at incorrect height. The ADA ramps, ramps and the seating. It does not meet any current codes required, okay? So we took that, we then, I presented it to the FEMC, which we then gave to the attorney Doug Beechy. Doug Beechy then informed, informed the FEMC that the grandstands were not to be used at all. He was gonna write, he was gonna write, I do not know if.
Until they're repaired.
Until, right, until they're repaired. They have to be repaired. Okay, yeah. I don't know if he wrote that, wrote that letter. We did meet with John Jones on Thursday of last week. We asked him to come out and just, we had a small discussion with him. And he concurred that, that the grandstands, knowing that they are being repaired, should not be used. So that, that covers the grandstands themselves. We did get a price. We looked into Southern Bleachers, Doug Hess, reached out to him. It would be next year before he could get anything for us. National Recreation Systems, they don't stop, they don't have stock right now. And they can't get in time for us to do anything before, before this year. Hussey, Hussey Seating, they, they do not have product at this time. New Tech Construction, they were, they came back and told us that they did find a vendor that they could get the materials from in order to get this project done before fair. Do you want me, would you like me going to the rest, the rest of the bleachers?
I don't know, the, the rest of the bleachers are.
Not part, really not part, they've got, the rest of the bleachers need to actually be removed.
The rest of the bleachers are being removed.
What's the final price that they can?
What's the fin, what's the price?
I believe it's on the backside of your thing, it's five, 500 and.
85,000.
85,000.
And that'll bring them totally up to code.
Correct. And as you see on that.
With aluminum seats and steps, right?
Yep. That's all, that's all aluminum. That's the hand railing, that's sandblasting, repainting, the electrical work. And all the shim, all the shimmying and repair of, repair underneath and the foundation work.
And the ramps?
Ramps, no, yes.
And it'd be done by the time the.
They, they guaranteed that it would be done before fair.
Questions, comments?
Mr. President, if we did, where would it be coming out of?
Well, we would have to advertise it next month. This is a support.
I understand, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna state that I still think it's support, but I'm just gonna say the reason why I'm saying it's support. So where would it, where would the 585 come from if we, if we believe we're gonna advertise it?
We could, we could publicly do it out of several different places. You can do it out of Riverboat, you can do it out of.
ARP.
Can we do it ARP, okay. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion because of the fact that this is.
You could do it out of one of the ARPs. Right, you have to look.
Right, we always, we always put both and then whatever falls in. So, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve for not to exceed $600,000 since it might be, till we get to. With, with, because I wanna state that this, in my opinion, is, is emergency, two reasons. One is that, that the insurance right now could, could become, taken away from us from time, because I talked to Mr. Jones. Two, we're under contract that we cannot fulfill the contract with seating arrangements because we have a contract that, for the fair at that time. So I guess I'm throwing my question back to Guy DeMartino.
Well, well, the big, the bigger issue is the health and safety of, of patrons.
Right.
Of people who are coming to the fair, of people from county. And your, your president and the president of the commission have already signed a emergency declaration to that effect. So.
So it's still, so it's still even at that point, we'll ever support it instead of a?
Yeah.
Because we have paid for this and did this, when they declared it in pass, we didn't do, do it this way, so I'm asking.
Right, so what, right, but it's gonna, it's gonna be heard, they're gonna hear it retroactively at their meeting next week. And since we have the time and, so we are going to. What, what Larry, what Larry needs tonight is the ability.
Order.
For the commission to enter this contract. So we need, we need the support. Because otherwise, because of the supply chain, we will not get the materials in time for the fair.
Make a motion for support for up to 600,000.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions?
You need to really explain to me what bleachers you are actually working on. The whole fairgrounds or just?
Just the grandstands, just the grandstands, the main grandstands.
And the others are coming down.
The rest of them out there, you're not touching?
The rest of them out there are condemned.
Including why the horse?
Including what? The horse and pony. The show arena, the horse and pony, the show arena. And the, the scaffolding bleachers, the wings that the fair is not using this year anyway. And the ones in front of the motor speedway are condemned. They will be gone before fair. For the recommendation.
And this is the only company that can do it?
This is the only one that can do this on, on these? Those, those, those scaffolding bleachers, that the inspector said, those were designed to be put up, taken down, put up, taken down. Put them up for an event, you take them down for a vent, you store them inside. They were put up, I think, 15 years ago. They don't meet any code, they're all rusted, they're, yeah.
So you're not doing anything with them?
They're just being removed.
Right.
They're being removed.
Right. They, they.
They're being removed.
The fair, the fair board at this time is looking to rent some bleachers for the motor speedway. And we're working on, I'm working with some business owners on something for the horse and pony arena.
Are those made of metal?
Pardon me?
Are they made of metal? Are we gonna scrap the metal and?
We're gonna scrap, yeah, absolutely.
It depends, it, what we're trying to do is find someone that'll actually come in and take these bleachers down at no cost to us. And that's what was discussed at FEMC, so that they could take these bleachers down at no cost so that, and have them out of there.
And then they would scrap it?
Right.
Right. Because it's not an easy pro, it's, yeah, so.
Are you gonna put that out to bid?
Well, that, well, we're hoping that the fair board has come up, the fair board's looking into it about them actually taking care of it so that they can take it apart themselves.
The fair board, technically, the fair board and the tourism bureau had bought these winged bleachers. The county didn't buy it. So even though they're sitting on county property, they're not a permanent fixture out there. So we're working with the fair board to try and figure out.
Well, neither is the pioneer buildings, but we still, neither were the pioneer buildings when we built them, but then they became county property.
These are, these are not fastened, though, is what I'm saying. These are, these are movable. But if you know somebody that is interested in, that would be, you think, a contractor that could do that, by all means, let Larry know. Because we're trying to find somebody to do it as cheap as possible or at no cost at all to get those out of there before the fair.
How many seats are you talking?
That, the ones that they're, they're losing or the.
How many total seating do you have on that we're, we're fixing?
On the grandstand?
On the grandstands, that's 1,600.
And right now they have capacity at about 6,000?
So I think they're, they're considered 7,000 with the seating in front of that.
Yeah.
Right. So.
Your honor. Quickie?
Your honor.
Mr. President? Larry, I take it lumber was not considered because of the nosebleeds, the nosebleed prices for lumber right now?
Guy Rock, you can buy aluminum for what we can buy lumber, so, yeah. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
So we have.
Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Councilman Garner.
Nay.
Councilman Yagowski.
Aye.
Councilman Mullenauer. What was that?
Shaking his head.
Shake your head, yes or no?
Shake your head, yes?
Thumbs down or thumbs up?
Yes, he said yes.
I wanna see a thumb, oh, sorry, thumbs up, thumbs up. Okay, Councilman Cunningham. Wait a minute, he was called already? No, Councilman Cunningham, you didn't call him.
With some reluctance, I'm gonna vote aye, but looking at these pictures, this stuff didn't happen in the last six months.
That's right.
Talking about an emergency, but it's an emergency now because we got the fair coming up and we've already contracted with two big performers. Some of this stuff is five years old. I'm gonna vote a very reluctant aye.
Right. It's an emergency because we had them inspected. There's never been an official report on these things, so. What he meant was that we let it go. That's what I'm talking about, not inspected. Right.
Councilman Rosenbaum?
Aye.
Councilman Novak?
Aye.
Councilwoman Graham Rosa?
Nay.
Five ayes, two nays.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda.
While I'm up here, can I do the EMS or let him come back?
What? You, you need to come back, I'm sorry. Next item on the agenda, Lapeur County Prosecutor requesting permission to dispense funds from Adult Protective Services investigators for a new state grant agreement. It was tabled last month, so we need a motion to take this off the table.
Motion to take it off the table, Mr. President.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum, take it off the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Okay.
Good evening. I'm here to ask to spend the state's money or from the federal government. So this is money that was given to, well, it's, it's taken, we started discussing this, the APS unit, obviously, that, you know, we, we have a hub. And we have six counties that we represent, Lapeur, Porter, Stark, Jasper, Newton and Plaski. And so the six APS workers, Catherine Schmidt's here, she's the head of the APS unit. And back in September of 2020, as early as that, we were negotiating, the state was negotiating with the federal government about getting additional funds to pay for COVID. And, and compensate for some of hazard pay, that type of thing. getting additional funds to pay for COVID and compensate for some of hazard pay, that type of thing. It took over a year of negotiation. And if you know anything about trying to get money from the federal government, it's almost impossible to get them to give us money. So we've now gotten the grant that finally came down, the paperwork and everything else was done at the end of last year. So we have $16,923.3 that I'm asking to use towards what they're, the whole purpose of this was to give for either overtime pay or hazard pay for COVID for people. And the suggestion came down from FSSA about how do you allocate this? You know, and going back to March of 2020, it was the people who worked during that period of time. So that's how we took the money. We just figured who was working during these months? And then came up how much, you know, would we, you know, be compensate them for that period of time? So obviously, the people that worked the most, that'd be Catherine, Alicia, and Deborah worked the most time. Nicholas and Michelle and Phil have only been with the unit in the last year. So this would be money that, you know, obviously, we need to get your permission to pay it. It's coming from the states. There's no money coming from out of the county government. In fact, you know, I assume that then the county would then want to either replace the.
Offset?
Offset what you've given before or are going to give in the future. And that's what I'm asking for. And one of the reasons really that this comes down to is that we don't spend this money. If we don't give this money, we have to do it by June 30th. If we don't, I'm just telling you that the, for me to get an increase to the APS budget took me two years to get them to give me an additional $75,000 in my budget. And when I got that money and I argued and I cajoled and I negotiated with FSSA. And when I got the additional funds, because we get over $400,000 now to run our unit with additional, now we're pretty much fully staffed. We've got these part-time investigators down in Jasper and Stark that help the travel time. I'm giving you a long spiel. I know it's been a long night, but I just want to tell you why. Of the other prosecutors were very, very upset with me because they're like, how did you get that money? Because we spend all our money. We use it up. Other hubs will give their money back and not use it. And with FSSA, they look at everything. And so if money goes back into the coffers, they're saying, hey, we give you $7 million and you only spent, you know, 650 or 6.5 million, we're not going to give you any more money. And so that's why it's really important for us to spend it. So I'm just, I'm asking for support. However you want to do it, this is the calculation that they suggested downstate. And that's, I'm just coming.
And for clarification, these are workers that during COVID, the ones, obviously, some worked more than others. That's why you're breaking it out. But these employees went into homes of people during the pandemic, so to speak. They were, right.
Right. This is starting.
They weren't working from home. These were people that were.
They're going out into homes and they actually went into homes where people had COVID. You know, and they did, some of them didn't have PPE. I mean, they're going and checking on Adults Protective Services. So people and endangered adults were calling and were sick. They had to go check on them. And, you know, at the very beginning, before we knew anything about how contagious this is, I remember Christine Harlow was my head back then and she'd been there for, you know, 20 years. The worry on her in April of 2020, talking to her, now I came into work, even though after I came back and quarantined, I came, I was at work every day. But it was like, I remember meeting with her and how panicked she was about getting the PPE and, you know, Director Brown, talking to the EMS, everything else. I mean, going back, it kind of seems like a long distant memory, but I just remember there was a real big issue with that. So.
Okay. Quick question. There's no chance that we're going to have to pay any money back if we don't use it? Or if we use it, we're not going to have to pay anything back?
This is a one-time grant and if we don't use it, it goes back to the state. Well, if you say no to using it in this way for hazard pay, I'm going to try and figure out another way to use it within, because I've got to spend the money for the grant. Because if I want to get, if I want to go and take one of these people and increase their salaries or anything else and ask for more money, I got to show that I use the money. That's just the way, that's the way the game's played, I guess. So.
But the state's not going to ask for them. I know it's not a reimbursable grant. It's not a temporary thing.
Yeah, we, if we, once we issue the money, the money goes back. It's a zero sum. It doesn't come out of the general fund or anything like that.
What's your pleasure?
Mr. Lake, did your employees get the bonus that we just gave all county employees?
They did.
So if we allow you to do this as a bonus, then basically you're saying that your people that went into homes, just like our county sheriff's department did and our county EMS did, you're going to give them additional money over the bonus they already received compared to our other employees, correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Then I would make a motion that you go back and find some other way to spend this grant money.
I'd second.
So is that a motion, Mr. Cunningham?
It was. A motion for Mr. Lake to go back and find some other way to spend the grant money rather than bonuses to people that have already received bonuses.
Seconded by Mrs. Graham Rosa.
To our other employees.
Still, I'm still. Mr. Yagowski.
Can I bring something up as to that? So when I was looking at the grant paperwork, it looks like it's really to be used for overtime and bonuses only. What if these folks are going to be getting about $3,000 for this year? And there's 16,000 and change, and it says five of them, and they're going to be getting $3,000 this year. Why can't we offset that? And that's going to offset 15,000 of the 16,000 and change? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Absolutely understand. That's a possibility.
We don't want to lose that money.
We don't want to lose it, but we also don't want to set another discrepancy between our employees. That's a problem for me.
And I totally get it. I appreciate, you know, and here's the thing. This was, as I said, this went back to September 2020. This thing was in the works with the federal government and with Division of Aging and all that. So it was in the works before and I didn't know what was going on. So with, because obviously you didn't decide till December on what you're going to do and how you're going to do those grants. And that's, I have no problem offsetting like going forward, like this would replace that. The problem is we had the discussion of can we go back and take the money, use this money to take, to repay, I think, the December, whatever the bonus was, or January 1st bonus. I don't know. Whatever that was, that was an issue that came up. And I'm like, we reached out to FSSA. They said, no, it has to be prospective. It has to be used for this period. So there's actually six employees. So you're, you know, you're going to be offsetting that to a certain extent. So you're saving money out of the ARP money that.
But not equally. If you give them one, $375,000 and one, $5,000, unless we, unless we.
You choose how you want to do it.
Unless we deem that it be applied equally and then you could take away the bonus equally.
Yeah. And the one thing is, one of them is, Phil is part-time. So under your thing, he wouldn't get a bonus at all. The only bonus he would be getting with this is $375,000 based on the number of months that he's been there.
Correct.
So I'm not trying to tell you how to do it. I'm just saying, however you do it, it's fine with me. I just want to spend the money before June 30th.
I concur with that because it's far better to spend some state money than county money. But I don't want to create a situation where we've, you understand exactly where I'm coming from.
I get it. I understand. And I have no, I understand the issue and everything else.
Could we, how about we workshop?
I was going to say, how about if we defer this till next month's regular meeting and come up with a better plan?
I'll meet with Mr. Lake.
Excellent.
And then we'll see.
You just wanted like even out the amounts?
Exactly.
And that's why, and I already, I told them, I said, I think this is not going to fly just because the discrepancy.
I don't want to leave money on the table, but I also don't want to create a bigger issue down the road.
That's fine.
I think this is excellent. Mr. DiMartino will get in touch with.
So you're changing your motion?
Yeah, I will.
And I withdraw my second.
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Make a new motion to have Mr. Lake get in touch with Mr. DiMartino or vice versa. And they workshop this thing personally and present it to us at our next meeting.
Great. And you agree with that?
And I'll withdraw my first and then.
And second to second.
And second to second.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item.
Mr. Lake, real quick, I'm sorry, I forgot the department that we were, when we did the Michigan City courthouse, that we didn't receive that money from because we didn't have the paperwork in time.
4D.
4D. Were you able to get ahold of anybody and ask if there's any way that we can reapply for that?
Oh, I did. I mean, that was one of the things. And the big thing is that that's also like the FSSA. And the issue is that it has to be before the construction. And that's what, that was going back to, that's why I wrote those letters in March of 2020, whenever the thing was done. And so I wrote all the letters I was supposed to write, but I never got the plans or the amounts to be able to present to them. And what they said is that it, once the construction begins, you got to get approval because it's not from just downstate. It goes out to the federal government and they have to then approve the use of those funds. So unfortunately, we.
And there's no way to reapply?
The only thing would be is on that big room, we've talked about building out that room for if you're to use it, you know, the big room on the third floor, to use that, we could use funds to finish that room out if we get approval beforehand, you know, as far, so if you want to turn that into some sort of like a formal chamber like this, you know, we could pay for that if it's going to be for 4D use. It only, the only, because the big thing is that they want us to, it has to be 100% use for 4D. That's where we always get, that's why we have those big.
Does 100% count? Like the eight hours a day you do that? So if we had a meeting three hours later on, as long as they're out of business hours?
I believe you can do it. Yeah.
You need 40 hours.
Right. I think there's like 37 and a half is how they do it. However, yeah, yeah, I think, and let me double check because I'm not an expert on that. I have to talk to Barry McDonald and see how they would do that. Because I think as long as we're using it, obviously, it's like if you use a court, because commissioners own the buildings. So after hours where 4D is not going to be using it normally, like on a weekend or something, or else if you want to have a commission meeting there, then we might be able to do something. You could do an informal hearing room for 4D in that space. That'd be one way to use that money.
I just want to remind the council, it costs us $500,000. He wrote the letter, but we didn't get it done. So that's 500,000 we lost out on the building. Yeah.
Oh, it wasn't my fault.
I didn't say it was.
I know, no, no, but I know other people watching are complaining about me.
I said, no, it's not.
I know, I know, I know, Mar. I'm just saying, I'm saying that, not you.
Thank you, John. I'll say it loud. Mr. Lake, it wasn't your fault.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I just, I would, I'm in support of the lit tax, just so you know, as well as the rolling prairie.
You're under order.
I just want to tell your majesty, let me say this, your majesty.
Did we reopen?
No, the rolling prairie was very important. That is very important, just because I'm out there.
Anything else? Anything else on that you want to take a look at? Thank you, John. Next item is Lapeur County Treasurer Brown Mackey expense. Front entry, $6,500, utilities, $19,273.04, and water bill of $550. This was tabled at our February meeting. What would you like to do?
Mr. President, Mr. Lake leave already? Mr. Lake? Mr. Lake?
Wait, it's tabled. You want to bring it off the table?
Oh, I'm sorry. I hear what you said. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Just, I just wanted to catch it for you left. I apologize. Can we at least take this off the table? Motion to take off the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, second by Mr. Rosenbaum, take it off the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Lake, there's, Mr. President, thank you. There was a lot of departments, including yours, that had more requirements than we were set up to be. We had all the meetings for it.
At the Brown Mackey.
The Brown Mackey.
Yeah, yeah.
So we over, because of not just your department, but a lot of departments, we overspent these departments. This money, I know it seems trivial to you, but I know you have some in your accounts. Could we have this paid if we gave the bill? Because you say about getting bills. It's $19,273, $550, and $6,500. So you're looking at $27,000. Then we got to ask you if you could take it out of account because of all the extra expenses. We overspent by a lot of money at Brown Mackey. We should have had plenty of money to go until mid next year, but it wasn't just your department. There were a lot of departments that were like that. Do you understand my question or no?
You want me to pay for the $27,000? Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I paid out of our accounts for all the special locks and stuff. So we paid for a lot of, yeah, there were, because of, we get into this whole thing, we start talking about outside agencies cleaning and stuff. You talk about the.
You paid for the additional locks at the Brown Mackey?
Yeah, on our, on our space, yes. I paid about.
Then Mr. Levendowski can come up here.
Levendowski's got a tight time, like, kind of looks like a.
No, we paid that. I paid those out of our money, our fraction deferral. All these, all these different.
All right, because you stand corrected, so I'm glad to listen to this one.
Right, all right.
So I'm not going to argue it, but we went through all the bills and those came out of the budget of the project.
So we paid.
All of the locks.
Not the special locks that we had, that we had the codes on for the prosecutor's office, the 4D office, and all our space. We had all those special coded. And we had, I went through the BJ's locksmith and we paid all those bills directly with PJ locksmiths. So those, yeah.
The BJ, when we purchased the locks, the work, there was some work that he did for the locks that you paid for that.
We also paid for the locks, yeah.
The actual locks.
He's saying he bought the locks.
We did.
He's saying he.
Oh, oh, I don't, I'm just telling you, I can go back and I get the bills.
So we need to compare the bills so that we can make sure we didn't double pay.
I'll make this real simple. Mr. President, I can motion to table it.
All right.
Do you want me to look at the bills? I'll share a little bit of those because I know we.
You guys talk.
And well.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion table and seconded by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Next item, number three, LIT update. Mr. Dermody, please approach. The other thing that we're going to be doing is setting a public hearing for April 11th. It turns out the 13th, I put the April 11th or the 13th, the 13th. There's a conflict in this room, so we cannot use it on the 13th. So it would be April 11th also.
I know you have a long agenda yet, so I'll be as brief as possible. But Councilman Yagowski put us on a nice little county tour. I think that was many months ago in November, and I am back. We survived. And so what we've included are a few of the letters for your review of support as well as each of the resolutions, which all were unanimous except for Michigan City, but Michigan City passed as well. So it did come back to you with 11 councils in support. And just some review information if you'd like, but other than that, I'll be glad to answer any questions or get out of your hair.
Does anybody have any questions of Mr. Dermity? Mayor Dermey, I'm sorry.
Not at this time.
I've been called.
Sorry. All right.
I would like to ask just one thing.
Sure.
Because earlier, Councilman from Michigan City was here. What was that vote?
Five to two.
Five to two.
Five to two. Okay, thank you.
Six to two and one absent.
Six to two, one absent.
Correct, correct. I'm sorry. There's nine members over there. Yeah.
Yes.
Right. Right. I'm sorry. You're right. There's nine.
I apologize as well. I was there.
Yeah.
Mr. Dermity, would you be able to stick around tonight? Because when Mr. Arnett and, I think you can answer some questions that will be helpful to him.
Sure.
I know he's very instrumental in the tournament that you ran at the city.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
That's going to come up with some of the discussion that he has. I would appreciate you still being here.
I will be glad to be here. I think President Novak said he's going to bump him up next, so I would like that.
It's only three away.
Yeah, he's up. So the other thing that we do is April 11th would be, we'll advertise that for a public hearing. I mean, did I say April 11th? April 11th.
Is a Monday.
Is a Monday. We'll have, at 5:30, we'll have the first reading on the lit and the public hearing that night. Moving on to the next item, number four, set a public hearing date, which would also be on the 11th for the resolution approving the acquisition of real property pursuant to IC Code 36-1-10.51. And this is the parcel next to the Michigan City EMS base on the west side of the building, Cool Spring. And we'd have, do this at the special meeting. Is there a question?
No. All right. So that's going to have to be a public hearing also.
Correct.
Public hearing and a meeting.
And the resolution.
And an appropriation.
And you need to appropriate.
Correct.
That'll be in the resolution, yes.
Yep. Your pleasure.
Make a motion to do that, to set that as, just now.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by.
Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Cunningham. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item is the Westville, update on the Westville emergency siren. Mr. Mullenhour has been working hard with EMA to go, I'm trying to speed this up, to go, we went down there and met with the town officials. Now, which one's from Westville? Who's from Westville?
Ryan, can you hear me?
Oh, he's on Zoom. He met with the town officials. They agreed to provide the pole and they will, we will move it and upgrade it and they put it on a taller pole and then they will pay the electric from here on out on that siren. So.
And did you receive the copy of the quote from Mark Whiston regarding the move? They'll take care of everything with taking the old pole down, remount. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Remounting the siren on the new pole, which will be a 60-foot pole down at, I think it's called Meadow View, is it? Park. And they'll take care of the, all the equipment on it and put the new pole up and. and the, the quote was for.
Eleven thousand six eighty-five.
That's correct, yes.
Mr. President, thank you for, by the way, thank you for all the hard work you did on that one. Mr. President, I can make a motion of support for eleven thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars.
Second.
I'll second.
On the agenda for next meeting?
Right. But it's a motion of support to proceed. So, motion by Mr. Jagowski, seconded by Mrs. Graham Rosa for support, we advertise for the next meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
All right, that completes that. Appropriations, transfers, and requests. Lepore County Coroner requesting permission to spend from the coroner's non-reverting fund for autopsies in the amount of five, fifty-five hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mrs. Graham Rosa to approve. Is there any other questions or comments?
A question, not necessarily to do it tonight, but when Len's feeling better and is present, I'd like to have a balance of that non-reverting fund.
That's probably something the auditor can probably.
Auditor, whatever.
Account twenty fifty-three?
I don't need it tonight, I just want to make sure that we're all.
Just email it to them. It also would be good for her to give us an update on how many.
Coroner's non-reverting fund.
Done. Oh, she's there?
Twenty fifty-three.
I am here.
Thanks, Len. Do you have that amount, Len?
Um, it's around twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a motion.
Thank you.
Go ahead. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item.
Thank you.
Lepore, thank you. Lepore County Council slash Paladin requesting additional appropriation from ARP out of eighty-nine fifty or eighty-nine fifty-one for assisted developmentally disabled population in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Bahatchek, State Senator Rodney Paul, Steve Hobbie from Paladin, and then Kim from Paladin as well, so you get the, the full suite of us here. I remember, I don't know if some of you guys remember this or not, but we were here before you during the work session several months ago to discuss, well, what direction we wanted to, to move with Paladin, to modernize their buildings, so we can now have a facility and the, the proper infrastructure so they can meet the needs of the community. This funding is authorized under IC twenty-nine dash one dash one. It's the same funding mechanism that allows you to donate money or give money to Swanson Center as well. I don't know if you noticed or not, but there's that pool of money that goes to Swanson Center that has to by state statute, like you're on Swanson Center Board, you know this. That's shout language, but there's bay language that allows centers like Paladin to, to receive this funding as well. Just want you to know real quick about Paladin, they are more than just the old Michiana resources, way more than that. You know, they run Head Start for Lepore County, they do early childhood care, they provide assisted living residential facilities for some of their, their clients, on top of all the other programming, plus they also run the old Parents and Friends transportation, which provides a lot of our non-emergency medical transportation for the county. And that's a real plus because the state, a few years ago consolidated all of that with Southeast Transportation, and the service throughout most of the state is terrible. So, here, it's, it's quite good, it's because of these folks. So, I know you guys have some questions about the programming, and they're the experts in that, so.
Mr. Jagowski.
I'll start it off. I know I've talked to you guys about it before, I know you know, you're going to hear, you're going to hear it again.
We, we were ready for it.
I know you are.
It's okay.
So, very disappointed because of multiple reasons why, and I mentioned this to you when I changed administrations. First, I was told that they had to get rid of all of the jobs that were mental type jobs that, that, for example, you know, you had Paperbox Company, you had Solair, you had Well McLean, so on and so forth, and, and the boat. And so I was told that you had to do that, and then I called the state and they said, no, we would prefer you don't, but there's no law that says you can't do it. And it still has not, and I just called there as of last week and it has not changed. They're not, they're not opposed to it. So, what I have a problem with is, and I mentioned this before when I talked to you on the phone, your last Friday, and I got to schedule for April two, by the way, your last Friday, they, and this is what I complained about, you, you showed three movies. I have the, I have two adult families that went there, and I have from both adult families, three movies for the day. They don't want to go in because they don't want to sit there and watch movies all day. I told you that there was some coloring going on, they don't want to sit there and, and color. I would rather have a, a young adult be able to do things like put pieces together, and that would be something that they, they were proud of, because there are jobs you have out there, for example, if you're a bagger at Els or something like that, some people are, are good at that, some might walk off with somebody, it's very dangerous, some in certain circumstances. I don't get why we can't in this operation allow for a little bit of both, and I've been complaining about this for over ten years, and I've talked to you about this at least once, but I've talked to other of your administrators, I've talked to your employees, your employees are very dissatisfied with this. They say, I got to sit there and hand this out and color, we have coloring sessions and we have, and I, I've got a lot of stuff that I know that, schedule wise, what you guys are doing. I want to support it, but I can't support it with the way you guys are doing the administrate, the way you're trying to administrate this job here. I want these, I want these young adults to have something that they're very proud of doing. And again, I called the state, so I'm going to tell you right now, they said you can absolutely do it if you wanted to.
Well, and, and I don't know who told you we, we couldn't do it.
There was, who was, who was the one that, when the cancel, who was administrator that canceled it? That we, we had those four contracts or five contracts? Who was the administrator at the time?
Yeah, maybe Bill Trailbridge?
Bill, he came in and said, I'm canceling everything. He says, state laws, I can't do it. And I told, I told him, no. I also mentioned to you, when you and I were on the phone, you called me on the phone not too long ago.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while. I want to support this, but I want to support young adults that still feel that they have something to do besides coloring and beside watching movies all day long. And I think putting packages together is a, is a nice job for them to do, it gives them something to do, they're proud of it. When they come home, they can still say, Mom, or Dad, or, or their guardian, or whoever, I did Well McLean packaging, I did, I did Solair, I did whatever. So, I, I, I would love to talk in the future about it, I've talked in the past, but nothing's ever happened.
I just want to interject for just a second, I've been there for twenty-six years, okay? And that program that you're referencing to is called the vocational workshop, that is a transitional program.
Right.
It is never supposed to be a program where someone's there for the rest of their life working, it's giving them the skills that they need to transition out into the community so they can be a meaningful employee throughout Lepore County. That's what that program is always about.
I don't disagree with you.
When we close that program down, I create a partnership with St. Andrew's Products that does allow those individuals to do the same type of task, that they are now our gainfully employed employee, working along people with non-disabilities, and that's what that program is about. That program is expanding, and I plan for other facilities. So, it's not a matter of we're not encouraging individuals to get a job, but that's truly what they want to do. That is our goal and that is our mission.
And I talked.
When it comes to the coloring, I mean.
Yes.
When it comes to coloring, Friday afternoons are choices, there are afternoon activities throughout the whole entire facility. Clients can choose to go watch a movie, or they can choose to go into the gym and play bingo, various activities. I have a whole list of other activity curriculum activities that are going on, and I have one of my staff that are sitting here, they have time to play. They kind of interject on some of the activity that we currently are.
Yeah, and I, I have employees that called me after my last time, we had, had this confrontation, not you, previous administration, and they expressed the same thing. Again, I have adult families there with adult, adults for their families or guardian, they're saying that they pick days they don't want to go in anymore because it's, it's, they don't have the things to do. So, either these other families are not telling me the truth, or some of your administrative, or some of your staff is not telling, because I've, and I can back this up with, with names, but I mean, I don't really want to. What I want to do is, is, if you say, I'd rather a bad day of forcing a kid to color, or forcing a kid to watch three movies in one day, I'd rather have them do, put this project together like that. I, I don't believe, I believe your, your one that you picked is great, but I'd like to keep the old one going and still allow a, a young adult to have some meaningful life.
The, the challenge, and, and we absolutely can do it. The challenge has been getting the work in to keep people busy. And I know that you're looking at me like that, but I oversaw the programs over in Lake County before they were Paladin, and we had to close it just because they were as bored as if they were coloring.
Okay, and again, I disagree, I know that plenty, plenty of corporations, Solair for corporations, when many awards were going out, they had so much work to do, they, they had work piled for them, they, they could have used more for, but they, they put it out there.
That's not what he said.
No, but I'm saying, they, you said, they had plenty to do.
The clients, the clients got bored. They didn't have enough to do, they were bored. That's. Oh, they didn't have enough.
That's, that's not what these, that's not what these parents are telling me, or guardians, that's not what your instructors were telling me.
Are those parents in there?
They're starting there.
Because I haven't seen a parent in there since I've been there, and that's over a year.
No, no, the ones that, when I say parent, they have a child that, or young adult.
Sure.
That's going.
That's what I meant by parent. Yeah, because we knew there were two, two issues, and I know your issue with our programming, but let me tell you that the reason that we would like to do this build out isn't to, for additional classrooms, other than we need to close our Lepore facility. Right now, with the funding that we have, it's very difficult for me to pay the staff a livable wage. And right now, we have some success with COVID grant money, so we've been able to give them more money, but that's not going to last forever. And so I have to get us stronger. And the reason I'm going to get them stronger is, we're going to consolidate the Lepore building and the Michigan City building and make those into one. We're going to reduce the, the mortgage we have there, we're going to reduce the utilities, we're going to reduce all of the, the overhead fees that we have at those facilities. It's going to make us stronger. But I brought, this is Sue Bezarek, she's actually one of our, our staff, and she was going to tell you a little bit about the programming that they actually do, and it's not coloring.
You got to come up to the microphones.
Yeah.
I'm not a public speaker, but I'm passionate about my job. I've worked there for over twenty years. I worked there when we were packaging things, and there was this little thing called downtime. And then we had to create activities then for them to do, and it was very hard on the spur of the moment. You had to rely on Solair and other agencies for work that didn't always come in. So, now, at least I know what my day will be held, will hold. And as far as coloring, we don't do that in my class. I provide quality, you know, programming that consists of like continuing education kind of things, like math, being able to make change, like vocabulary. I had a girl, she scored ninety-eight point eight, I, I gave her the SAT entrance exam. We don't play around. I mean, we, the first part of the day, we do scholastic kind of things, or things I think that they're going to benefit from, and then the second part of the day, we do socialization kind of things, like, like horseshoes or, or bocce ball, I take them outside, I bring outside in. For the first time ever, we're going to show chickens at the fair, we have chickens in our courtyard, they've raised them from chicks. Before that, the way I got them interested in it was, I got an incubator, we hatched out eggs. You know, I don't know what, you know, other people are doing, but in my class, we're, we're doing stuff.
I believe you, but you have to understand, you're passionate, I'm passionate, and I, and I actually interviewed these people. I spent time to go talk to these parents.
When do they come into the class? I mean, they're all day.
It was just Friday, you just had three movies Friday, I just told you.
Friday, yeah, that is a movie day, that's their free day.
That's, that's.
And when, when, even when we do a movie, when I do a movie, it has a purpose. We discuss, you know, if it's a certain day or whatever, that the movie has to have some virtue, some, some meaning. And, and sometimes it's just plain old movie day, the clients will pick it. We have cooking day. I had a client, she wanted to do the recipe herself, so the last time I let her run the, the cooking day, and we, they pick recipes that they've never done before, I mean, I can go on and on.
I, I could too. We can agree to disagree, so I have, I have people that I've talked to, we can agree to disagree.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, and, and I would like you to come in.
I'd love to, but I want, but I want to talk about programs that make, make it worthwhile.
So, so what could you, what can you do to assure us that, aside from the program that you're saying you're doing, we're expanding to make it even better? That this, that this, this money, this addition, this commit, combining the building, this repurposing the building, is going to be a good thing for all these clients?
It's going, not only for, for them, but for the staff, and this is the sustainability of the staff. For the first time, today is the first time I can say, hey, I compete with McDonald's. Today's the first day, and that's only because I got grant money that I was able to do it. And that grant money, like I said, isn't going to last forever, and in order to benefit the individuals, I need good staff like Sue. And Sue was one of the reasons that came in and said, I don't know how I'm going to live with the raising, the rise in gas and all of the cost increases. And so we have to do it, and you, you look at our driving program, although it's not the day program, it's part of the staff we pay through the day program. And we're doing, we're providing the non-emergency medical services to not only seniors now, but you heard the healthcare foundations talking about prenatal care, and so they set us up, now we're working with expecting mothers to be able to go back and forth. And why is that a benefit? We have a van that's, that can hold the young ones, so if they've got young kids that need to go with them, we can transport them. All of that is to combine these buildings.
So, this is more than a, forgive me, and don't take this, a glorified daycare?
It's not a glorified daycare.
I mean, I, I'm just, I've been there, I've spent, I've spent a lot of the time, and we had a meeting with Councilwoman Graham Rosa out there, and I know she's been out there, and, but for years, I mean, I used to come out there and inspect the place when I was at the fire department, so I spent a lot of time out there. This is Graham Rosa.
And I would like to say, because, you know, I know a lot of adult people that benefit from these types of programs, I actually have one in my own family, and when we took them to a center like yours and they figured out that he was high scoring, they would move him on to another location. Is that not correct? Am I not telling?
Well, the whole goal is gainful employment. If you look at the direction the state wants to go, it's gainful employment. And that's not the pre-vote, that's actually getting them on, into the workforce. So right now...
So when they come to you and, and, and you realize that they are gainful employee, they have the capability of being gainfully employed, you move them on to another agency that will help them?
Well, one of our services is employment services, and that's where we take them out. We do job trials, we do job training, we get them gainfully employed. And as we've been introducing ourselves, we've been talking to companies about, hey, we have people that could be employed at your company, and we can provide that support to do it.
And our family took advantage of that, so I, you know, I...
Two of my clients are gainfully employed.
Right.
And they come for day programming, just for the socialization and just for enrichment.
So I appreciate everything you do out in the community. I can see it as a plus, you know, and what you're asking for right now is a larger building so that you'll be able to combine both locations into one area, and then move the clients all into one building, and therefore be able to continue the programming at a sufficient, at a savings, because you wouldn't be supporting two buildings.
Absolutely.
That's basically what we're asking for.
Yes.
And so all the programming is going to pretty much stay the same. When you have clients that are gainfully employed, you move them on and you make sure that they get those jobs. You know, when they lose those jobs, they can always come back to you, you can help them and get them trained for another program. So I don't think that the debate here should be like what they're providing, but that the fact that they're providing good services based on what the clients' needs are. And right now, what we're, what we're looking at is just trying to combine two buildings.
Absolutely, yes.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the appropriation from ARP 8950 or 8951 at this time.
Before, before you all get started, I do have a question for you. Senator Bahatchev brought up Indiana Code 1229-1. And so I'm just wondering, at some point in time, did this already go before the commission? Before it's coming to you all?
It was part of the ARP plan.
Okay. Right before the commission? Okay. Then you're good to go.
Yep.
And I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Gardner, seconded by Mrs. Grandma Rosa.
I'm going to ask you my question.
Any other questions or comments?
A quick question. When I took the tour, when you're talking about the expansion, it seems to me, I recall there was some conversation with people from the New Buffalo area that can't get certain services in that area, that once this is done, it would produce income for you, increased income, is that correct?
That is correct. We have individuals, we have the state funding, we can't take Michigan funds and cross it over the state line, but I do have families that have...
Do you have families that do have a strong interest in privately paying for services?
Thank you.
So just a quick question to answer that question. I'm actually, so my daughter Stephanie, who's 20, she gets services right now to New Buffalo, Michigan, because of her mother's residency, even though she lives with me. My brother, her mother lives in New Buffalo. At age 26, she ages out of their program. And being a New Buffalo resident, their, their site that she would have to go to was in Niles, Michigan. So she would be sitting on the bus for an hour and five minutes to get to Niles, Michigan. So certainly, it's going to make a heck of a lot more sense for her to go facility, to facility locally as well. Your treasurer, Treasurer Winsky, her granddaughter goes there as well. So, but your points will take it, Mark. And, you know, as far as trying to work out some additional programming, please, I would, I would enjoy your input. I really would. I would value it.
And then we'd ask you, just come back in, Councilwoman Grandma Rosa is the liaison for you guys. And, but just, the more communication, the better that we know everything's going. And I know a lot of the clients come down to the boat ride every year, and, you know, we always look forward to that, and it's, there's some great people out there, so.
Yeah, I did want to also mention that we did apply for the community give back. We did apply for the community give back project through Tonnemblank, so we did get figures, preliminary figures on how much the build out would cost.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
Society is always judged by the way they take care of those that can't take care of themselves.
Amen.
It's a fact. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item is the LaPorte County Council CB, CVB Toll Road Marketing Proposal, request additional appropriations from ARP for 2022 and 2023 in the amount of $50,000 per year.
Good evening, everybody. Jack Arnett, LaPorte County Convention and Visitors Bureau. I think you all understand that in LaPorte County, we try to be the leaders in our industry in CVB, and we think we are. We're very, very committed to regional, regionalism, and certainly regionalism within the tourism industry. I happen to head up our regional group. Dan Baris, our executive director, is here tonight. Mayor Dermody actually is on our advisory board that helps us guide in some of our mission statements. So I'm here tonight on a regional basis to talk about how we can partner up with the county. And I think it's a given, we've done a pretty good job in LaPorte County with returning tax dollars back to the community. That's our job. We take innkeeper's tax, we multiply it by six or seven times on the dollar, and we put it back out in the community. I only need to look at some of our recent successes, as you're all very familiar with. We brought eight high schools across the United States into LaPorte just a few weeks ago, hosting the, the highest level high school players in the country. ESPN zeroed in on LaPorte. They zeroed in on our city. And you know what that's called? That's called image building, okay? And that's what we're kind of talking about tonight, is partnering with you all to do some image building with our county. And that goes from the, the civic auditorium, all the way to all of our county projects that we helped fund already at the county level, all the way to the, the boat race, which brings in folks from seven continents. If you get over here this July and August for our boat race, there's going to be seven continents represented here. That's image building. Those folks are going to get a snapshot of LaPorte County. They're going to want to come here, spend money here. So that's what we do. So as a regional group, we're here tonight to ask to partner with you all with the ARP dollars, which were pointed towards tourism and the industry, and show you a way we can come together and do the same thing we do at, at the county CVB as a partner, where we can roll out a project on a toll road that our advisory board has approved. And Dan's going to explain that to you right now, give you a short synopsis of what we do on the toll road and what we'd like to do. Dan Baris.
Thanks, Jack. Yeah, my name's Dan Baris, and I'm honored to be here today and to give you more details about the program. Darlene, if you can help me go through this, and we'll probably... Our regional organization was, was founded to take over the travel, as a way to take over the travel servicing on the Indiana Toll Road. And you can see, our membership includes seven counties along the toll road. And we try to do projects that are, can best be done by multiple entities working together rather than an individual CVB approach. We have a perception problem in the state of Indiana and northern Indiana. The state of Indiana just did a perception study last year, and it came back, and it's no surprise to me that well over 60% of people from outside the state have a neutral or negative impression of northern Indiana. And the problem is, and Indiana as a whole, I think the biggest problem, our state tourism office has a very small budget compared to Michigan, Illinois, Wisconsin. And the biggest ad campaign we've probably had in the state is Indiana Beach, and it's the crow speaking for us, you know? No wonder people have a negative image of, of northern Indiana. We think we can do something about that. We think we need to do something about that. The good thing is, we have a perception problem, we don't have a substance problem. Northern Indiana is home to Indiana Dunes National and State Park, to the wonderful beaches along, in, in LaPorte County and, and Washington Park, the iconic University of Notre Dame, and the third largest Amish community, which is a major tourism draw in Elkhart, LaGrange County. All of those wonderful, one-of-a-kind experiences are about a mountain, hour and a half apart distance-wise. So we've got the product. We don't suffer from a substance problem. What we have to do is a better job of marketing ourselves and telling our story. The way we do that is by establishing a powerful brand, Indiana's Cool North. And I want to show you a little bit, a video that brings that together. If we can go ahead, a few slides. Yes, several. Go down to where the... Go to the next one. Yeah, right. Awesome. Let's see. Well, first of all, this is, we have a programs in the new travel plazas on the toll road. So we have welcome centers inside the travel plazas, and we promote on videos and through brochures and other sign communications, all the great things there are due along the toll road. So the toll road delivers an audience of, of over 40 million people drive that road every year and go right through LaPorte County. And through our programs that we've done in the travel plazas, telling our story, we have an economic impact study that we generated that showed that we generate over $40 million a year in annual economic impact along the counties along the toll road. The problem is, of the 40-plus million people that drive the toll road, only about 25% of them go inside the travel plazas, because they're traveling onto their, through the state or getting off at their destination. With our billboard campaign that we're doing, we'll have the ability to reach the other 80% of the people we're missing right now. When you think about 40 million people, that's three times the size of the Chicago DMA. And the ability to, to get a message into that Chicago DMA would cost more money than every county in the state of Indiana has, because it's such an expensive media market, and it's so fragmented. With the toll road, when people are driving the road, they're going to see the billboards. And the billboards we're talking about is a pure Michigan style, which I'm sure everybody's seen, billboard campaign, that when somebody drives that road, right now, you could drive that entire road, and you wouldn't know that the Indiana Dunes, or Lake Michigan shoreline, or Notre Dame, or Amish country, any of that existed. And quite frankly, the billboards are there right now, do largely are national companies or are for the types of companies that perpetuate that negative image rather than build the image we know we, we should have and deserve. And so I want to show a little bit of bring the brand of life. You can go to the next, go down to the next. There's example, go back up one. There's example of the type of billboards that we're talking about, what, you know, more like the one on the right probably, but it depends on, we could go several different ways with that. And if you'll go down a couple more, go down, yeah, right here. This is the Cool North brand, and just shows you the pride we have in our region and should convey to others outside our region. So I think you can get the idea from seeing that, you know, we, we have a lot to brag about. We don't deserve the negative image and perception that we have. And with these ARP dollars, it's really the opportunity to get a campaign going and to own a market that is huge, 40-plus million people, and to get our messaging out there and then drive them into our communities and into LaPorte County, and to capture the economic impact from that. And then the halo effect that it would do to attract talent and businesses to the, to our region as well.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to go forward with spending $50,000 a year out of the direct ARP fund, 8950, which is what it's been meant for and which has been put through by the commissioners.
For '22 and '23?
For '22 and '23.
This motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Grandma Rosa. Is there any other questions or comments?
Question, Mr. Dermody, I sent you last week a copy of a video of the National Player of the Year Gatorade, or one of the other players. It was a kid from Kansas. And months after you had the tournament, the civic auditorium, ESPN did another 15, 20 seconds, and it showed the LaPorte Civic Auditorium, and said, LaPorte Civic Auditorium. You know, and every time that ball crossed the center line, city of LaPorte emblem was there. Can't pay for that on a national advertising scale. At any rate, I was somewhat reluctant on this. Jack will tell you, I was a name vote months and months ago. But the more I understand how they have the ability, when you had that tournament, you couldn't have done it without Tourism Bureau. So this is in a way of us kind of helping back, pay back that ability when you need something right away. The boat show wouldn't be here if it weren't for the Tourism Bureau. And I just think that it's critical that we look at the bigger picture. I guarantee you that a family from Kansas, whose parents drove in here, and every day at the tournament would say, what is there to do? I said, go see Lake Michigan. We have a big boat show here. They couldn't imagine a body of water like that, and they're in Kansas, and they said, oh, we'll come back for the boat show. It's little things like that that accumulate over a long period of time. So I just wanted you to confirm that I sent you a video just recently.
Yes, you did last week, and it was great to see, I was off, out of town the last few days, and it was great to see the civic auditorium on that national stage. And you said it best, none of this would have happened on our two main events, which is the NIBC basketball tournament and our Lake Fest, without the Tourism Bureau and the work that they've done. I know Michigan City feels strongly about the boat races as well, so we're very fortunate to have this team and marketing our county here in LaPorte.
Great. Mr. Yagowski, nothing? Nope? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Keep up the good work. We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Hey, Jack.
All right, we're coming back to order here.
I'm just tired.
After our break, next item is LaPorte County Council requests additional appropriation from ARP.
I don't want to...
Or for the volunteer...
There's a little button on the back.
Mike, he's muted.
He wasn't.
Oh. For the, this is the $10,000 for each of the 16 volunteer fire departments in LaPorte County, for $160,000. Motion by Earl Cunningham.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Grandma Rosa.
I have a comment.
Comment?
Yeah, we received a notification from our coroner where...
We've resolved it.
I know we've resolved, I just want to make a comment that it got resolved, where we weren't getting some support from some of the volunteer fire departments. And so now it's been resolved, so I'm more than happy to go through with saying yes.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Mr. Auditor, when will those checks be ready so we can let them know? Tomorrow? That'd be great.
They don't go to townships? They're going to have...
We'll get you all this stuff. You just, we'll talk tomorrow. We'll talk tomorrow. All right.
Very soon.
Next item is LaPorte County Information Technology requests additional appropriation from ARP for case, case for archiving, for $6,000 in multi-faction authentication?
Multi-factor authentication.
Right, that's what I said. And she changed that amount, it's not 180,000, it's now not to exceed 50,000, basically. Right.
Point of order, please.
Point of order, Mr. President.
It's advertised under, sir?
Yeah?
It was advertised under Riverboat and/or ARP. I left off the Riverboat part on the, the agenda.
The Riverboat is on there. All right. Is there any questions? Is anybody, have any questions of John and Darlene?
Did anyone make a motion?
Not yet.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for the 50, not to exceed the $50,000 for the multi-factor authorization and $6,000 for case for archiving. $56,000 in total.
Out of where?
Out of Riverboat.
I'll second.
I don't know if they're waiting or not.
Motion by... Motion by, motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. Any other questions or comments?
We didn't record.
Recording in progress.
Mr. President, I'd like, because recordings start one more time again, please. I'd like to make a motion not to exceed $50,000 for multi-factor authorization and $6,000 for case for archiving, for a total of $56,000 out of Riverboat.
And I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum to take it out of Riverboat. Any other questions or comments?
Doesn't John look nice tonight?
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Just for the, Mr. Auditor, just for clarification for the minutes, do we need to go back and restate anything on the previous motion, since there's no record of that?
No record.
Oh, yeah, we do.
Yes.
Right, okay. All right. Good call. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the LaPorte County Sheriff requests permission to spend $18,790.25 for Mr. Meter Fund.
Second.
Mr. Meter Fund, he's not asking for additional dollars.
Right. Was there a motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Requesting permission to spend $7,650 from the K-9 donation fund for trainer and handled, certification K-9 handler.
Motion to approve, it's from the donation fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum. All those in favor, say aye.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next item, LaPorte County Sheriff requests additional appropriation from General Fund or ARP for paid unused sick days in the amount of 9,000. Is this for two people?
Two employees, yes.
Two employees. Right.
Motion to approve out of General Fund.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski out of General. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Grandma Rosa and Mr. Molinar. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, John.
Thank you. Can I just point out real quick, I know it's late, but we have two employees here, one that spent a quarter of a century with the sheriff's office, working in the jail, primarily in, on the midnight shift. It was Susan Wilkie. I don't ever recollect that she ever called off sick. She was a really valuable employee, and I want to thank her for her dedication to the sheriff's office. And David Spence, who spent almost 44 years with the sheriff's office, that's almost half a century. And his loyalty is absolutely unmatched, so I want to wish both of them the best of luck. And I want to point out their loyalty and their years of service to you as well. I think it's important that the public realize that we have employees that spend so much time and invest so much time of their life to the people.
Have they already left?
Well, they're on vacation right now.
Right. If you see them, please pass on our appreciation.
Actually, they called off sick today.
Right.[1783.15]
Wow, that's funny.
If you see them, please pass on our appreciation for all their years of service.
Thank you for letting me recognize them.
Thank you for recognizing them.
Did I already do an all-in-favor say aye?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Next item is LaPorte County Building Maintenance requesting additional appropriation out of Riverboat or ARP for the Rowling Prairie EMS slash highway project not to exceed two point three.
Mr. President.
Six, what?
So on this thing, before we get off to, we don't have enough money for the ARP, just so we'd have to split it between Riverboat and ARP or something.
So what, why wouldn't we take it out and lit? I think we got close to ten million.
I can re-advertise next year, do the favorable.
We could, we could do a favorable vote and then, and then re-advertise for next month.
Motion to support.
Is that okay?
It's okay, just to make sure you understand.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna make a motion to support to spend two million, three hundred and six thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-two cents, so that this way the contracts can be signed and move forward, and then we'll advertise.
Out of lit.
For lit.
And our next. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Molenauer. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum on the question, Mr. Yagowski.
Yes, sir. I liked, earlier we had a lot of people come up and speak about the Rowling Prairie project. Of course, the commissioner said it's a go, so I don't know where that all came from. I just want to make sure everybody understands, this, this is for the building, the building only. We do not at the current time have enough money to spend for staff and everything like that, so I just want to make sure that everybody understands. I'm glad that everybody that was here appreciated, but nobody in the public knew that. So I would, I endorse the project, I just said it's not a full hundred percent project.
Right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? If we could, we'll add that appropriation on to the, we'll do it on a special meeting just so that we get that out of the way.
On the eleventh?
On the eleventh. Next item is, oh, thank you, Larry. LaPorte County Parking Department requesting additional appropriation from Riverboat for the two mowers that we did a favorable vote on last month.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Out of what?
Out of the Riverboat.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Cunningham out of Riverboat for the twenty-one thousand for two mowers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. The next item is waterproofing in the, of the Environmental Education Center. I think, I know Jeremy sent everybody out pictures and everything, so it's twenty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Motion to approve out of Riverboat.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mrs. Graham Marosa out of Riverboat. Is there any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Next item is LaPorte County Treasurer requesting additional appropriation of Riverboat or ARP for the Brown Mackey January expense of eighteen hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-six cents. Does anybody know?
This was up.
I'm sorry.
Yep. For this money's here for January, this is what they was in the red after they paid some bills, so we need to make that up. We have a Brown Mackey fund.
We'll have to find a way. Mr. President, I make a motion, we table this.
With the other one?
With the other one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Yagowski, seconded by Mr. Rosenbaum to table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? LaPorte County Emergency Management requesting additional appropriative appropriation from Riverboat or ARP for tower and maintenance of towers for sixteen thousand and repair of two sirens in the amount of forty-six thousand dollars. Good evening, Rob Sabey, Assistant EMA Director.
Hi, Rob Sabey, EMA. That's sixteen thousand. When I started, the first of February, we found it, it didn't get put into the budget from last year. It was a, somehow got missed, and that's the money that pays for the, the towers, the two towers we have in Kingsbury and Rowling Prairie for the utilities on that and for the maintenance. So that's what that's for.
And then you're repairing two sirens, or?
Yes, and then the rest, we had, there was money that was encumbered from last year, it was eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars to, for those repairs. Plus, we've found out that Springfield Townships, they're adding on to their building, and the siren that's out there is actually, it's not working properly.
And it's too short of a pole.
And it's been repaired several times, and it's in bad shape, and they need it moved so they can put their driveway in where they're, they're expanding their building on one side. Anyway, it needs to be moved back, and that's, that's what that's for. And then there's two sirens that were, some of the money that was encumbered from last year that were to be fixed. One's in Fish Lake that's, was hit by lightning, and the other one was in Michigan City on Plum Street that was hit by lightning, and they need to be repaired.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills out of Riverboat.
Second. Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum, seconded by Mr. Yagowski. Just, all right. All those, is there any other questions or comments?
I just want to ask real quick, where was, where was the one in Michigan City?
It's at Greenwood Cemetery, it's Plum and, Plum and Jackson.
By Plum Street, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Do you want to just briefly talk about, this is something I know that Mr. Yagowski and I have talked about. No, we already, we already did that one, sorry. The, that your, there's two vendors for sirens.
Right.
And you're currently looking to get an upgrade on all the sirens and everything so that.
Right, we've been, since I started, we've been going around GPS and then looking all the sirens in the county. We got them all done. There's a lot of them that are in, that need repaired, and we found out at the last siren test that we did for the statewide drill, there was one out at Prairie View Elementary that's not working, that needs to be repaired. And there's one in, at the fire station in Michigan City that didn't work at all, and we had them looked at, the one in Michigan City, the fire station there on twelve is shot, it needs to be completely replaced. So we're in the process of going through and, and talking to the two vendors, actually our sirens right now, some of them are partially federal signal and partially American signal. They're like, apparently years ago, they had, they were upgraded, and most of our sirens were federal at the time. The upgrade was, the electronics was American signal, so we have five federal heads and American signal. Anyway, some of them are battery backups, some are, some of the telephone poles that were, they were put on were donated, which don't meet specs, they're not tall enough. Some of them are like twenty, you know, thirty foot, and they're supposed to be fifty foot. Yes.
Meeting specs would mean, like, that's, we had a Westfield, we were able to get a smaller one. Specs are, if you're going distances now, what the problem is, is that we're just, we're abandoning things. When somebody won in their neighborhood, they put it in their neighborhood. Like the one in Westfield, there was really not a need for it there, but sort of smaller one and pull is fine. So what Randy was leading to is, we need to get grant money so we can get all of them replaced, not just this, not just the idea. And the other thing is, when you have a test, we should be calling different places. Of all places, we should never have a fire department that, siren not working. I mean, I'm sorry, that's a shame. So I, and we test, I hear them go off in Michigan City, so we should have more communication in what we're doing right now.
Right. One of the other, one of the other issues is some of these have a radio, so they can send a signal out, and it'll bounce back and it'll tell them that it's working. Well, the radio works. The siren might not be going off, but the signal, the thing sends a signal back, so that's something else that we, we need to get with the new technology, because these sirens are old.
Well, actually, what we're finding is pretty much opposite that. A lot of the sirens are still working, but they're communicating, they're not, we're not getting communication back.
Until then, though, we should, we should be contacting, you know, fire department, yours on, because it goes off every, every fourth Saturday, so this, this, I think that's the part we miss.
Yeah, we're, we're working on trying to, you know, upgrade all that, trying to get, make sure we're.
So can you talk to Mitch? I know that you also, you also, you have some skills of writing grants?
Um, not very many for my.
You can get ahold of Mitch.
But I have talked to Mitch.
Okay, are you, are you going, this is a question, Mr. President, are you gonna be, taking some classes? Because your, the, the job of yours was supposed to have, that you were supposed to be a grant writer. That's why we paid more money for that job. So are you gonna be taking some classes for that?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Okay.
Cause I, I mean.
You've taken every. Well, I don't know, because I, I didn't, we didn't, I know, we don't hear how they hired you, it's fine, and that's great, but you're supposed to be a grant writer, that's why we pay that job higher than normal.
You've taken every other class, you might as well take that one.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we've, just to give you a little bit what's going on with the, the deal that's going on in Ukraine, we've had, you know, meetings all last week with all the department heads in all the cities, and just trying to make sure their plans are up to date for, you know, if there's another cyber attack or something like that. So, you know, we're, we've been pretty busy trying to make sure everybody's, you know, safe and, you know, their backup plan.
That's fine.
That they're working.
So can we work with the grant writer and see what we can get, please?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Rob.
Thanks.
Next item is the LaPorte County Auditor requesting additional appropriation of Riverboat or ARP for Baker Tilly Gap reporting eighty-six thousand, five hundred dollars.
I make a motion to pay, sorry. I make a motion to pay for it out of Riverboat. This is something that both auditor, previous and current, need assistance with, and they're using, I think, an excellent firm to do it at a good price point.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum out of Riverboat.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Graham Marosa. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Next one is LaPorte County Assessor requesting approval of overtime transfer of twenty-nine hundred and fifty dollars and forty-nine cents. This is for the part-time work that his people did outside of their normal working hours for the Michigan Township reassessment. So it's his money.
Motion to make the transfer.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Graham Marosa. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Never mind.
What were you gonna say, Mike? Go ahead, we can hold it.
I know you said it already, but there was discussion earlier that he was going to pay people that did things that.
And I talked.
But they were working, so that is, those people aren't included, correct?
These are only people that worked overtime outside of their normal hours.
Okay, thank you.
And we want to wish Assessor Mike Schultz a speedy recovery. He's currently down and out, so with that, any other council comments?
Yeah.
I do.
You want to start?
Mr. President, I'd like to take this opportunity to stand up for our current auditor. You know, I keep reading newspaper articles here on the radio that he's out of line and now there's rumors that they're gonna try to remove him from office. The bottom line is, if I were in his shoes, I would have challenged many of the same things that he did. I disagree with him, and I've told him this, I, I think the worst case scenario is to withhold a whole bill when you only disagree with a portion of it. I think we've resolved that issue. The bottom line is, just on the recent ones, I mean, we, we know the Swanson Center email, the NAACP, the Black Ministers Association, the Health Department article, most recently, communications on the Don Prisbalinski matter. Now, that's the brother to Mr. Prisbalinski who was here tonight. Well, later we find out that that was merely communications about trying to get his support for the drug rehab center. That's purely political. That has nothing to do, Mr. Prisbalinski's not even the president of the Michigan City Council. And also, Mr. Friedman's wife is the one that proposed the drug rehab center. She's intelligent enough to communicate directly with any council in Michigan City. We shouldn't have to pay our attorney to do that. And the same thing is true with Black Ministers Association, NAACP. Sheila Matias is the former mayor of Michigan City. If she needed to communicate with him, why would we have to pay the attorney? A minimum bill of one minute is fifteen dollars. The minimum charge is one-tenth of an hour. Whether he's one minute or six minutes, it's fifteen dollars. It's almost an insult to some of our employees who are starting at fifteen dollars an hour, not a minute. So I would think that, we ought to think in terms of a strong support for the auditor to continue on, demand that if you're not satisfied with the explanation, that you're not paying until you get the explanation.
I'd like to make a motion of support for the auditor for acting in his role.
Second.
A motion and a second, supporting the auditor in his role.
No, currently, I mean, there's a situation where, you know, I've heard that they're going to sue him personally for acting in his role as the auditor. And if it were this auditor or any other auditor auditing, doing what they're supposed to do, and that's auditing the records, then if there's a question that he's not doing his job right, then it's our responsibility to support him in his, in his role.
So I would agree in the way he's doing his job, but I also agree with what Mr. Cunningham stated, that this is, and, and Tim knows, that we've been working with Tim, I've been talking with Tim, and just like Earl said, you shouldn't withhold all the bills, so I, I think it's, it's a double-edged sword. So I, I agree that he's, he's doing what he feels he needs to do, and he's watching over the money like it's his. But in the same token, withholding that entire bill, I don't, I don't agree with that. That, that was not, they create, when you have an issue with some, a thing, call out that thing, but to withhold bills for an entire, well, this is three months, four months later, so.
The, just to clarify if I may, the entirety of the, the bills outstanding need to be evaluated during the January fifteenth and the February fifteenth still.
You need to do them in a timely manner, though, because when you're paying bills, and you, you stated, and I don't want to get in a, in a debate with you, but you said, then I'd lose my leverage. That's why you said you were withholding the entire bill, because it gave you leverage.
Well.
I don't, and I.
I'd like to clarify that, because that, that may create a misimpression with the public. I mean, the, the idea of leverage is that when, when you request documentation.
Then you withhold payment on those documents.
That, that you want to resolve the entirety of the bill in one fell swoop, because sometimes, let me finish, sometimes something that comes up in the investigation of the billing brings up other issues and other questions. So it's like, give me this information, Mr. Friedman, so that I can, I can work through this, see what else is left. Okay, now things left, we'll pay. So I don't have a problem with, and, with, with, so that, that's one of the issues, but.
I understand exactly what you're trying to do. I just think there's a different way to do it, and it needs to be more timely. I'm just saying. You can't take three months to review a bill.
Are we, are we just focused on the timeliness of it, or are we also focused on the egregiousness of, of some of the billing?
I'm saying, I'm not, if, if there's a dispute, if you feel as though there's a dispute with those items, then pay everything except those items. I'm, I, I understand that. And we told, we told you that, Matt, so I, you know, I don't.
My, my specific request in, in an email this council was for an affirmation of, of an intent to support financially, that, that, that the notion of the auditor being sued personally is, is misbegotten and a misrepresentation of, of, I mean, it is my function as auditor it is my function as auditor that I'm not paying the bills. It's not as, as a private citizen that I'm not paying certain bills, and I'm certainly more than willing to, 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 to meet the council more than halfway on, I'm keeping up, getting up with the bills. These are the objections. This is the information that's now provided. Everything else is paid. I have been religiously paying, uh, Mr. Friedman's, uh, his liability defense work from the county, and in fact, sent an email to him saying that the, the granular detail is exceptional. I actually sent an email to him, uh, several days ago. Um, it was hard to do, but I felt it was the right, it was true. I was impressed at the level of detail, and so, um, I'm, I'm, you know, that's.
When did you send the email out, ask him for support? Did I?
Um.
Did we all get?
Well, I think it was an informal request.
Oh, okay. I just thought, maybe I missed something, so, no, no.
So.
I guess, and my other thing would be is, if it's regarding, it doesn't matter, support, so, it's for support.
So we have a motion on that table?
In a second.
In a second.
Yep. Any other questions or comments?
I got a comment. I think it's up to the voters to either support or deny Mr. Stables, uh, not, that's not our job. He's an elected official.
I couldn't disagree more with Mr. Molinaro. He is the secretary for the council. He is acting on our behalf, and we are the financial body, and he is trying to protect us spending dollars on things we shouldn't be spending, which are political and/or county manager type jobs. I mean, stop charging us for things that you shouldn't be charging us for, we won't have any dispute.
Right.
My opinion is just as qualified as yours, Mr. Molinaro. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosenbaum.
Okay. I rarely try and, uh, push around my background as a business consultant, a tax person in the CBA and accounting field. It is the duty and the job of any chief financial officer to question anything that they deem may not be reasonable. Whether or not the, the question is reasonable, that's different. But, in this situation, to take away the ability or to threaten somebody's ability to do their job for the county is improper. And therefore, I'm totally in support of him continuing, whether it be this person's bill or anybody else's bill, to question anything that deems irregular. And that is the job of an auditor, and it is the job of a chief financial officer, it's a job of a controller, it's a job of anybody in the line of defense on spending cash and spending the taxpayers' money. That is my opinion. That has been my experience.
Bro, shut up.
I'm just, can you mute, can you mute that? I don't know what that was, but. Mr. Yagowski.
Uh, Mr. Stables, are you being sued at the present time?
No, for, I have not received, I have not been personally served with, with any paperwork regarding the claims-paying process of Lepore County. Um, I'm currently in the defamation case.
So, I'm, I'm gonna do the apple before the horse, that's all, that's it. And just, Mr. Cunningham, my question.
Any money, I'm just making a motion of support.
Again, again, supporting, I said, and I said, I'm not, I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm saying, you're supporting what? He hasn't got any lawsuit checks.
I'm supporting the job he is currently doing.
Yeah.
Going to do the bills and withholding payment of bills that are questionable.
But he's withholding all the bills.
Right.
With the exception of withholding all the bills.
Right. Okay. If I may say one thing? Uh, my, my solicitation, my respectful solicitation of the council is to send a message to any vendor, and, and, and specifically this known vendor we're talking about, that, that in these types of disputes, that to, to, um, to bless the notion of my integrity being attacked by my being sued personally and saying that I'm settling personal and political scores, I resent that. Um, I don't have, this is not based on personal political animus, so I think the council, my request to the council is to stand up for the notion of the integrity of the office of the auditor, and that indeed to send a message to this vendor that if you, that, that we do not see as legitimate your notion that you would sue the, could or, or legally legitimately sue the auditor personally, because it's clearly his function, we stand by him, that he is fulfilling his function as the auditor.
I would have to say that not having a legal background, I, I, I cannot make a comment if he's within or without his rights to sue you this way or that way. That is not, is that part of this motion?
Talking about any way.
I, I know, I know, but I, so I mean.
I'm talking about, just keep doing the job you're doing, Mr. Stables, because you're doing the job as I would do it if I were in your shoes, in most of these cases, I.
Except for withholding all the bills.
Except withholding all the bills. Uh, Mr. Novak and Mr. Yagowski.
I'm sorry, I, I object to the terminology withholding all of the bills. That, that's a mischaracterization.
The entire bill.
Entirely.
Entire bill.
I have not processed the January, February bills yet. Those have not been processed.
You shouldn't be processing the January bill, we're in March.
And I'm working on the March, the January bill, right?
Well, in a time.
You know how time consuming it is to try to get information on this stuff? It's a big hassle.
You don't get information, don't pay it. The stuff that you are satisfied with the information, pay the bill. And just don't pay the bill for the stuff you don't have the information.
You got your mic on?
Get the information.
Your mic?
No. He does not.
Any other questions or comments?
I would like to.
Go ahead.
I just want to say I play a lawyer every fourth Monday of the month.
It depends, you pick and choose which you want to lawyer, though. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Was that three?
And, and I, I will make my comment, my comment is, my vote is because of withholding of the bills, the entire bill. Not bills, because you pay all the other bills. A lot of the other bills. I don't want people to think you're not paying, oh, anyway, forget it. Alright, any other questions?
Yes, sir, no, no.
What?
Why? Okay. The Northwest Times put out an article, Fortune 500 firm coming to Michigan City. I resent it unfortunately, though, but I'm not gonna be a person out there that will ruin it for Michigan City, but if you just take the articles, it had, real estate attorney Brad and Adam Minsky.
Dan.
Adamski told the city council that the City Economic Development Corporation, Michigan City, have helped so far. This is still the beginning of an annexation process, one quote. The county, the council unanimously approved the fiscal, um, detailed and positive financial impact of the city for annexing the land, again, for annexing the land. Uh, the last part, it takes ninety minutes to annex the property.
Ninety minutes?
Ninety, ninety-eight days. Uh, I'm trying to go fast. Uh, we have a councilman that says that we're spending all this money, we should be able to get some of this money back, but we just appro, appropriated, uh, money over there across ninety-four. This money doesn't, um, Mr. Dabney is, is misspoken.
Councilman Dabney.
Councilman Dabney, is misspoke on it. What he, what he's trying to say here is that, that, okay, we're investing in, but that, but they have overcapacity of water, they have overcapacity of sanitation. That, that helps them out the bottom line. As they do more and more people, that lowers their value down to, they can offer services cheaper. Uh, he also, he also says, I want to, I want to start taking up annexations all over the city limits. Well, I know that they put water and sanitation out, or water out there to, um, uh, to Beverly Shores, water and sanitation in the pines, and along beach, it's coming out there.
They also supply water to New Buffalo.
And also to New Buffalo. Are we gonna now annex that? Let's believe, at least, we spent fifteen million dollars, seven and a half million dollars for us, seven and a half million dollars for, uh, Michigan City to do four hundred. You guys all remember what happened there. They had a friendly acquisition, BP, and annexed Michigan City. People don't pay higher taxes just to become part of Michigan City. So I would hopefully find that, like we did today, we had, uh, four firms total invested with ten million dollars. I think we're doing a good job collectively, but if you allow one individual to do it all by themselves, it's not good for the city, it's not good for Lepore County, it's not good for economic development.
And, and I, I agree with you completely, and to echo, I watched when, uh, Councilman Dabney made those comments, and his thing is, is, you know, if we're running sewer and water outside the city, we need to be annexing that. The, the redevelopment commission and the council appropriated the money to run the sewer and the water outside of the city, but the city sanitation and the water continued, they bill for it, but we ran those services out here, so they're not spending the money on it. So I think he's a little bit misinformed.
I was trying to, sweet point, thank you, sir.
Yeah. Anyway, any other comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Rosenbaum. Seconded by.
Graham Rosa.
Graham Rosa? I just, I didn't hear, I didn't hear, I, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.